Six fifty-nine. And we'll stand for the pledge if you please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Merry Christmas. Same to everyone. Amendments to the agenda. If I would be allowed to, I'd like to put executive session personnel. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions, comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and executive session is now on.
When we get to the budget, can we talk about getting two computers for the listers out of the listers' equipment fund?
Okay. I don't think we have them.
They're very neat.
To put it in the budget or to just buy them?
Well, to buy them, but we need authority to buy them.
Okay, then we're gonna have to vote on, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
You wanna add on our new business?
New business, yeah. Listers? Do the same thing. Motion, second?
Second.
You're motioning. Whatever. You get that, Claire?
I do.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Approval of minutes of December third.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Additions, deletions, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Meeting with the auditor. How do?
Hello, it's me. My name's Josh Quinn, R.R. Smith. The pleasure of being back to audit your town again this year, which we were very happy about. Specifically for our at-hour audit presentations, I'll just hit the highlights. You guys have had it for at least a week. I'm sure you all know every eighty-seven page very well.
Got and tittle, and we know it all. War off the print.
So typically, I'll start, so I'm gonna reference statements and page numbers, you guys can flip to it, or flip for yourselves.
I did it.
So, the first one I'll talk about is Statement C, that's page seventeen. And this is your governmental fund balance sheet. So this basically identifies your general fund, highway fund, and all of your other governmental funds, which are your capital projects and your special revenues, all in one column there, right? So your balance sheet, you've got your assets, liabilities, and then your total fund balance. We'll look at net activity on the next page in a minute. But the real meat and potatoes is you guys have a fund balance of one hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in your general fund, ninety-seven thousand, which is unassigned, which is a good position to be in, especially with all the other money you guys have tucked away in various pots. Your highway fund is something that needs to be separated out per statute, and then we'll get to the other governmental funds a little bit as I go through it. And please, if you have questions on something that I'm talking about, holler it out. This is not formal.
Oh, just so I understand, I like to think I do, but the unassigned, and what is pretty obvious, the committed is, is there anything specific on those two? You know, what, forty thousand on the highway and fifty on the other? Is it, what exactly is committed?
So committed is typically something that is voted upon by the taxpayer. So if you put an article out and say, hey, we wanna move fifty thousand dollars of unassigned fund balance over to the capital products fund, can we do that? And the taxpayer says yes, that becomes committed.
Okay.
Assigned is something that you, as the board, can do, so you can assign funds during the fiscal year to some project or some fund, if you wish. And then unassigned is money that's basically unspoken for, that you guys have been building up over the years.
Thank you.
All right, so the two pages below that, so page nineteen is Statement E. And this is your revenues and expenditures, so your actual activity in fiscal year nineteen. Your revenues for 2019, so this is as of June thirtieth, 2019, were one million, one point seven million dollars change. Your expenditures were one point six four. You did have some transfers out of sixty-two thousand dollars. So basically, a net change in fund balance, so a surplus at the end of fiscal nineteen of twenty-eight thousand dollars. Plus or minus, and that moved your total fund balance from one sixteen in FY eighteen to one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in FY nineteen. The other big pieces that you towns typically will have is water sewer, so that is Statement G, which is on page twenty-one. And this is the balance sheet, similar to what we just looked at for the general fund. Each of your water sewer funds and their own separate funds. And both of those have the same plan, so assets, liabilities. Now, the difference between proprietary funds and your general fund is proprietary funds are treated with net assets. So you have a net position as opposed to a fund balance at the end of it. So basically, all of your long-term liabilities, all of your long-term assets are all included on this schedule, so it looks a little bit different at the bottom. There's no actual fund balance. What it gives you is a total net position, which takes your net investment in capital assets, so all the money that's inside your assets that you have as a town, and then subtracts what you have that's unrestricted, that's not within your net assets. So for the water fund, your net position, you have one point six four, and for the sewer, it's one point five four.
And that, the negative one eighty-seven is just because, how does that, how does that explain now?
So basically, you've invested, it's basically investments that you put into structure.
Okay.
All right, so, two more pages. I'm gonna jump to Schedule E, which is on page sixty-four. This is a list that identifies all of your special revenue funds. So these are funds that are also within your governmental fund. And it lists, so your airport park, your community gardens, emergency reserve, grants planning, all those funds that you have. There's a section that has all of your balance sheets in it, so your assets, liabilities, and fund balance. Then you can see on the net activity, a couple pages down for all those as well. So you can see how much money you've spent in all those funds, if any, through the year. As I mentioned, you've got that emergency reserve, that's three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And various, you've got a total of like nine special revenue funds. Right below that, Schedule is Schedule F, and that has all your revenues and expenditures for that fiscal year.
I lost you, where was that?
Yeah, page sixty-four.
Okay.
So we try to make these, we put it in the back because they're not required, but we try to just make it very clear and transparent, this is all the money that the town has, all the different funds. Here's all the assets, all the liabilities, and what the activity was in this one. Moving on to page sixty-nine, this is your capital projects funds. This is another six, there's another thirteen of these. And same format, assets, liabilities, fund balance, for all of the money you could have made for fire pit replacement, for your municipal building, your listers' equipment, education fund. Below that, you also have all of your net activities, your revenues and expenditures. The other piece that I will also hit on is long-term debt. That's actually a note, that's on page thirty-nine, we're gonna jump back to it.
Before we do that, what's the difference in why are there, on sixty-four, you have a couple that I didn't know we had, actually? I didn't see that, like, police seizure fund and jaws a life. And what's the difference between sixty-four and sixty-nine, besides five, I know someone's gonna say that?
So, special revenue funds are funds that are set aside by the taxpayer, and then they also put money in to be for specific uses. And that money can sit there, like your emergency reserve. That can sit there untouched for eternity, basically, until you decide you wanna use it, and the taxpayer says, yeah, go ahead and use it. Capital products funds come with a requirement that you have to start spending that money in five years.
Oh. How do, I guess the question I would have then would be, we add to it each year, or can add to it each year, how do we differentiate that, just by the dollar amount that we put?
I have, so, I will premise that, but I've never actually heard of the state coming in and saying, maybe a reconciliation of when you've spent this money. There's lots of money all over the state, and the school districts are probably pretty, have a lot of capital products funds as well, and that's, you know, there's that requirement, but I've never actually heard of the state coming in.
Thank you. That's interesting news. I don't say that in front of him, I just thought, holy crap. Go back to thirty-nine?
Yeah, thirty-nine, long-term debt. So this is in the notes section, there's a huge, long list of notes that kind of clarify, is very specific on how books are brought in, and all the pieces and parts mean that are in the audit, and all the requirements in GAAP, so generally accepted accounting procedures, and GAAP, and all those sorts of things. So that's kind of note one, it's all the generic information. Note two through, I don't know how many notes you guys have here, two and beyond, it's probably fourteen or fifteen, those are all things that are specific to your town. So long-term debt is one. Long-term debt, as I mentioned, in the general fund is not actually shown, so it doesn't fit that general fund assets and liabilities page. You're strictly fund accounting, so it's year-to-year, the long-term debt's not shown. But this is where you see the long-term debt that the town has accumulated. And for governmental activities, it's, there's very little. You do, and business type activities, your bonds payable right now are two and a half million dollars, which also is not very much for a county or sense. So I think the statutory requirement or limit is ten times the grand list value.
We're not there.
And it gives you what your current portion is, so your governmental activities, that final column on the right, is forty-nine thousand, this for fiscal year, and for your business type, it's a hundred and fifteen thousand. It also lists, if you continue further, lists exactly what all of those bonds are, if you're interested. With that, I'm gonna end my extremely exciting presentation and open it up. You guys have any questions? Actually, I lied. I will also say, I have two types of clients, clients that I like to go to, and clients that I don't like to go to. And that is specifically based on how organized they are, the accounting structures that are in place, and kind of the lack of better sort of ease of which my audit is. They have structures, they have policies and procedures. Is the, are the books in order when I get there, as opposed to walking in the door and saying, oh, I haven't gotten that, and I need to make these adjustments, and I need to do this and this and the other. This is one of the places I like to come, and this is the first year I was even here. Nancy Sarsfield, who works for us, I think she probably gave up Fairhaven somewhat reluctantly. So I'd just like to basically say how nice it was to work with Jenny, with Joe, and it was a pleasure, and I look forward to coming back. So anyway, to that, I'll open up questions.
Being the rookie, I'll ask first question. I looked at quite a few disclaimers in this about you don't give an opinion. And so I'm scratching my head a little bit in the movie, saying, we just did a complete audit. I wanna know the state of the state, but yet, it's disclaimer after disclaimer about not giving an opinion of whether we're doing things right or wrong. So can you help me understand that a little bit more? I think we're in pretty good shape, is what I hear you saying, without saying, I guess, without saying we're in pretty good shape.
So, yeah, so, so the audit, when we issue an unmodified opinion on the audit, we are basically saying that we do not have any modification to your financial statements. So this entire document is yours. It's not, it's actually not ours. We take the information that's provided to us by Jenny and Joe and you folks, and we create this form, that's actually outside of the audit, the creation of this document that we're looking at. So we're basically saying in our unmodified opinion that the financial statements are materially accurate. So that's what we're auditing. You know, it says we have a million dollars' worth of assets. Do we agree that there are a million dollars' worth of assets? Yes, we do. That we material, there are no, there are no material errors or statements, is what we're saying. All of those qualifications are basically saying, you know, this, we didn't go through every single line in your general ledger. We didn't go through every single transaction that you've done. We review your internal controls as part of our risk analysis, but we don't say that your internal controls are working a hundred percent guaranteed, and that, you know, that there's absolutely nothing wrong. So we're saying that we don't have an opinion on your internal controls, and whether or not they are working to best practice or designed correctly. But then what we do do, so that's sort of the audit piece, that's our requirement of GAAP and GAAP, and that's what we have to do and say. We do have that management letter that we also issue. And this year, the only thing on the management letter talked about cash receipts. There were some cash receipts that we noticed as we went through your bank reconciliations that seemed to be variances in all of your bank recs. And so those appear to be things that just weren't entered in a very timely fashion, and so that would be one area that would have some opportunity for improvement, as far as inside your internal controls and the designs that you have in place. And that's kind of where, as far as internal controls, and are you operating effectively, that's kind of where we put those pieces and parts. If there was anything major that we thought was wrong, then you would see that in the audit documentation to say, you know, we have issue with this, this is a, you know, a material weakness, or it's a significant deficiency. Nothing that we saw raised any of those two levels.
Good, thank you.
Questions?
What's your recommendation on those cash receipts?
Excuse me. Cash receipts, we've already talked, and we talked about all this before.
When you're there.
And it's really about, just about, because the procedure's in place to enter all cash receipts when they come in, it's really about just making sure that happens. I think a lot of the cash receipts, there were some pieces and parts, when there's events that are off-site and are not entered right here, is when do those get entered, and how quickly do those get entered? So it's just really about ensuring that those things are happening. It was not prevalent, and I didn't find, it wasn't all over the place, that maybe some of that could lead to a more significant deficiency type of thing. So it's just, here are some things that we saw, some things that we found. And I would expect, you know, this is my first year here, so for me, it's a ten-thousand-foot level, and picking a couple pieces and parts to really dive into, and next year, I'll expect to dive in even more, now that I have some familiarity with you guys, and hopefully have some more just comments or thoughts on where Jenny and Joe can improve the internal controls, or the procedures, the efficiency, anything like that, that's kind of on the table.
I guess the big question is fund balance. Where are you comfortable with?
So.
Right?
It depends.
That was gonna be my next question.
So, I did get sort of one of the questions of the quiz that talked about that fund balance, that notes you guys were falling under, or having, or below two months' worth of operating expenses. Industry standard sort of best practice is having three months' worth of operating expenses in fund balance. But as the note says, you guys have lots of special revenue funds, you have that emergency reserve that more than makes up for that amount, so it's not a concern for us. But typical best practice standard answer is fund balance should be around ninety days' worth of operating expenses. That's in sitting in the, in unassigned.
Just out of curiosity, what is, what constitutes the infrastructure that's at four million, eight hundred thousand? Is that roads, generally, roads, bridges? As I see that the buildings and building, land improvements and...
What are you looking at?
Page eleven. Table four.
So yes, that's gonna be, obviously, the municipal office, and roads, because highway is within the general fund.
So I see buildings as separate, that's what kind of threw me, so...
Oh, I'm sorry, you're looking at infrastructure, sorry.
Infrastructure, right?
Yeah, so let me see, I might be able to pull up here. Public assets. Trying to hold this very large schedule, just so you can... So in your infrastructure... Your infrastructure includes all your public works assets, so it's water sewer.
You're not going back to Meen, are you?
I live in Middlebury. I am going back to Middlebury. We got less snow up there.
You do?
Yeah, we got a little bit of snow up there.
That's good news. Does anybody have anything else?
Nothing unless Jenny or Joe have anything to add.
Well, I'd like to say that Josh was very helpful getting the mistakes from the last audit fixed. Because there were a few things that were messed up. He had the pre-audit, we worked on the water sewer, you know, things, for that split, because that would mess up, the assets ended up being messed up. That's why you see it in the report, it says restated or something.
That wasn't hard to follow.
I appreciate it.
The twenty-eight thousand dollars in increase in the fund balance, was that primarily additional revenue or unspent expenditures?
Undespend.
Revenues exceeding expenditures.
All right, so actually, these are pages I probably should even mention. So on page fifty-eight, I'm gonna go over the numbers this year, I'll go through this here. Schedule A, so this is a budgetary comparison, so this is your budget versus your actual for the fiscal year. So your revenues, your budget was one mil, sorry, one point seven-six million, and your actual revenues were one point seven-three million, so you're actually taking less revenue than you had budgeted for. And then your expenditures, also, did your budget, revenues and expenditures equal one point seven-six million, and your expenditures were only one point seven million. So that's where it was left, you spent almost sixty thousand dollars less than you had planned.
Try to do that again. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome. It was our pleasure. And we'll see you next year.
Have a safe drive back to Middlebury.
That's only a few days away.
I know.
Give our regards to Mr. Smith.
I will, I heard he's lurking around somewhere in the area, but I never, I never believe it until I see him, so.
He was, by, by a couple of past board members, and an auditor was referred to as the bulldog for a while.
That he was, or?
He was, yeah.
Really?
Because he was... He is matter-of-fact, you know, right there.
He is extremely matter-of-fact, yes, absolutely.
It was a good compliment, believe me.
When you know your stuff that well, you do that way.
Well, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Safe trip back.
Thanks, happy holidays.
You too. Fortunately, you don't have to go as far as I thought you did. That's good news.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Five minutes for a public comment. You the public.
No comment.
Fair enough. Department head reports.
Been doing some remodeling on the garage.
On purpose?
Well, I did, I got it so I can get the trucks in there with the plows.
Oh, nice. You shortened up the lunchroom.
Yeah, I did. Doing a little more. Been having cotton brush, getting the sprays on the trucks, so we can spray the roads. I guess that's good.
Okay, you're busy.
Those ice storms are terrible.
How's that, I mean, it's way early to ask this question, but how's it look, the sand and the stuff?
Looks good.
I mean, we're way early to even consider that, but it's, we got a lot of junk early, too, so.
Had a few calls about the snow blower. This one will put it down onto the people's forches. So he's gonna calm it down a little bit.
Can you turn it, I mean, can I?
Yeah, snow, enough heavy snow to...
No, so he's...
Well, the reflector doesn't do much for light.
You can just put the flipper down.
Yeah, but it still's...
Turn the motor down.
Quite a lot more power than the old one.
Is it possible to do it towards the road with a truck, or is that just...
Yeah, I told him, I said, swing it towards the road, you know, get it, so we're not putting down people's forches.
Well, I've heard, I've had some complaints about the plow on the sidewalks, and so the snow, you know, so we'll see what happens with the snow blower, and you, you know, you were making the judgment, which you used, so...
I mean, the worst part about the G plow is, when we're doing it, it was soft and...
Yeah. Well, that's what I said, we know we always gotta go back to do that.
It's one of those things. Even the wings are getting the shoulders out, so...
What do you, what do you call that new machine that's down there for de-icing the roads?
That's what it's called.
I had some calls on that.
Yeah, I bet people pull in there and take pictures, and one old guy.
And he texted it to me.
Yep.
You haven't done any welding on our bucket or anything yet. I wouldn't, I, you know, wouldn't it be cheaper just not to use that thing?
And get some serrated edges for the cutting edges for the raters?
It's just a trial thing.
I just don't see a.
They just give it to us. They bought, they bought everything. We just, we just hook it to our quick coupler and push it down the road.
I don't see a big use for it.
Well, there's places, though. South Main Street, that gets all bomed up there. You know, that might.
Yeah, we'll see if we get.
We'll see. As long as it's not costing the same thing.
There's always that one week when it gets ahead of you and you get that pack.
Yeah.
And it takes four or five days, that'll take it off, right?
Yeah. Yeah, you go, you go online and.
And for free.
Yeah.
You can have a kicker in.
But you go online and, and look at the video. It's pretty neat to watch it. Choose it right out and the blade just cuts it off to the side.
Well, yeah, so we'll see what happens.
Any word on truck?
They told me it would be between Christmas and New Year's.
Are there?
And they've given you a loan or to use?
Yeah.
I wonder what that was. Okay, I didn't know that. Good.
Yeah, they gave us a ten more. Works nice.
Other questions for Sam?
Things are going pretty good.
Um, I guess I will mention that there was some complaints about Big O Hill. I talked to you, I saw you the other day. Well, I'll tell you that. We will deal accordingly. I mean, but I'm. Uh, worried about the width of the road and that kind of thing, and the coverage.
They skipped plowing it one, one storm, but I think it's because there's only an inch.
Yeah, and, you know, I.
Yeah, I found it today.
It blows right now.
Where I come off the blacktop, I dug in that one.
I don't doubt it.
I had to pick up, pull up, pull it back into the road.
Right. I knew there was a reason.
I just was so sorry. I mean, even that ice storm last Saturday, I mean, I was cut right through.
That's another thing I.
You know, there was this much ice, like the ground underneath it was so soft when you rolled, rolled over it, it just broke up. But I went out and sanded it.
All I can do is sand.
The other side needed it.
Yeah, I mean, they just, I mean, she calls me every time, every time, so.
I, yeah, and, um, there's twenty-seven hundred different opinions in this town. And you'll get them all. I don't mean to dismiss their complaints. I just mean that there is.
I go off and do it.
Don't be afraid of the change either, that's where we, we. I don't mean to tell you your job, but we had to before and it didn't sink in.
No, I know. I just, it's.
Well, chains running on that road will bust it up anyway, so.
Well, I mean, it's a, it's a judgment call. I know it is. Anything else? Okay. Cue?
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
Green Mountain Power sent us a letter. Just to let you guys know, if you see somebody hanging around full with the lights, Green Mountain's coming through and they're gonna replace some, uh, some of the streetlights and security lights with special LED lights. Yeah, no cost to the town.
Don't we have those now?
We do, but there are some that they say are still out there that need replaced, so.
Will that change the, the bill, the weekly or the monthly rent we get?
Per fixture.
Per fixture, yeah.
It should change the, they said it would reduce our power. They did.
I think he uses less power than.
But I think we get, we get billed monthly as a just, like we're renting a light.
Yeah.
So, so then they, then there should be a reduction.
Reduction in power.
Higher price for the fixture, but lower.
Well, they're doing it all right.
One of these things.
Right, right.
That's the nice thing about it.
Yeah, but then, I mean, it's saving them money and not us.
As well.
It'd be nice if it was both of us realizing something, but.
So I've had six, this goes back to meetings, so I've had six questions that I never responded to the board. I figured I'd get to that today. Um, you guys, Bob, you asked about the rec clinics and the numbers. I have those, just to hit it very quickly. Basketball was our number one clinic. We got a dance clinic that did pretty good, and let me see, a theater clinic that didn't do too bad.
Of what?
Theater.
Oh, theater.
Yep. Nicole said she's had eighty-nine kids. It was her busiest day in clinics.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, for, for rec. Um, Adam Street Bridge, somebody had mentioned we had seventy-five thousand dollars for construction grant. That wasn't true. It was a study that we got money for.
Of course.
I wish Jay was here. He loves those.
I'll do it for him.
Somebody saw a stack of, a stack of letters sitting on the desk that was actually billed going out for garbage. So we bill monthly for garbage to use the transfer station.
Not many.
I'm sorry?
Not many.
Go ahead, you. It keeps coming up that the police aren't walking around out in front of the school. I've been keeping my eye open, and not every day, but I have seen the officer out and strolling in front. So it's not, it's not an always or not. It's not all the time, but they are out there. Um, I've also been keeping my eye on the no parking zone out there. For seven days, I checked every day, a couple times a day, there was nobody parked out in the no parking zone. The, the chief did. I asked him what he saw. He said the same thing. He has issued warnings, and people are pretty much staying away at this point.
I think that's cleared up anyway now.
Random drug tests. You absolutely cannot do random drug tests per BSA. Just as a heads up.
I knew that.
Yeah.
You cannot do random drug tests.
You can't random drug test your staff.
Horrible, horrible news.
Now, why can't?
For CDL you can.
CDL.
But I can't just say, hey, Jenny, you're going for drug testing.
If I get a day off to go, yeah.
You want, you wanna go to South America or something like that?
Or wherever they want to send you.
Jamaica even?
So we've done pretty well with our delinquent tax collecting. We're up over twenty thousand dollars now. Um, we're trying not to sell homes. People are, people are paying, and we need to thank Bob for that. She's, she's the bulldog down there. She's, she's making sure those letters get out. Uh, Sam and his crew met with me. I think we've hammered out that five-year paving plan. Uh, we'll let the board look at it and see if Sam's done looking at it. V-Trans approved no parking out Washington. I spent six hours for a five-minute meeting, two hours there, two hours back.
Just thinking of all the time you had up there to enjoy yourself.
What was that, on Washington, by the bank?
Yeah.
For the people's?
Yeah. I'm meeting with, I had a phone call with the EDA today. We're moving forward with trying to find a funding for the Adam Street grant. If we don't qualify for their emergency supplemental grant, they have another grant that is the fifty-fifty split. The one we're trying now is an eighty-twenty split, so that's a lot better, right? We got some movement on mechanic. Uh, we have two locations where we're gonna put in some additional drainage. The engineer said it would, might be about two thousand dollars for each spot, so four thousand dollars is seven hundred and fifty bucks our, our cost.
Dryweld or?
That's what it is. It's like an infiltration, infiltration basin in the swale where it goes down and drains out. The trip will be to keep, make sure they're clean, because people are gonna park over them and it's gonna.
Did you say two thousand each?
Yes.
To engineer them or to build?
To build them. It's already engineered. Um, and fire marshal's coming on the thirtieth to start our first review of the plans we have to do start construction here. And that's, that's what I got.
Good. Questions for Joe? Moving right along. Old business, signed VCDP policy form?
So the, the board signed this once when we applied for the elevator grant. But the VCDP changed their form and added a whistleblower section, and they said please sign it again.
So it's just a re-sign of what we signed? You didn't want them to sign it again, or?
Oh, yes.
Want them to re-sign the VCDP policy form.
Second.
Everybody understand what we're doing? All those in favor?
I mean.
Those opposed? Okay. Sign the paperwork for the fuel tank loan.
Yeah. Uh, so the Agency of National Resources has given us a twenty thousand dollar no interest loan to remove the fuel tank, close it up. This is just for, uh, this is just for Bob to sign, but I need a motion.
Motion for our board chair to sign the paperwork for the fuel tank loan.
Second.
Questions, comments?
How long to pay that back?
Uh, it's a four thousand dollar, five years.
Five years.
Yep, and that money is in the budget currently.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
I.
Those opposed? At least it's just money to do something.
Yeah, we'd have to study this.
Of course. You can borrow all the money you want to do stuff, but you get grants for studies. Uh, okay. New business, uh, do the tax sale first.
So we have, should we, we should have a sheet in your packet that has a list of the properties. These are the six that will go up for sale on January ninth. We need approval from the board selecting to make, to place bids on these properties.
Uh, motion to have the town man replace bids on the properties up for tax sale.
The minimum bid, is it?
Minimum bid of what's sold.
Second.
Do we have money to, to buy these? I mean, where would that come from?
Jenny, where's that money come from?
Just for line item for tax sales, but.
You overspend it and then you get reimbursed.
You'll probably never get it back this fiscal year because of regents for a year.
Oh, right, yeah. Okay, so that's. Seven, eight, eleven. So it's fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So, I just, I much prefer. I mean, it, it's reimbursable if, if somebody redeems.
Eventually we get the money back, right. It's just.
There are, there are a couple here that don't look promising.
I may, may add that on that green road property, if it doesn't get redeemed, and the town does maintain ownership of it, make a nice place for a little park down there on the river.
It's a nice spot.
That's. All right, so we have a motion?
Are all of them worth more than the number?
Significantly.
Significantly more. That's the question.
Yeah. Uh, according to the Lister's card, there's one on, I think it might be cemetery that was a little rough, rough around the edges.
Who tells you that?
Huh?
Oh, right, right. We already talked about that. That's right, yep.
So I made a motion to, uh.
Nice, yes.
Yep.
Now the town entered, been on these up.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Up to the.
Old.
The minimum bid. Oh, okay.
Uh, like I said, that green road, you know, I don't think it ever did.
So is the town paying for the heat, or are these winterized properties, or? Unless we, if we were to be the high bidder, or the only bidder. Or what, is there a, a plan in place to go in right away and make sure that?
I would, I would winterize these things if there's no one living there.
Why, why would we pay it for the heat? Let's winterize it, but is there a plan in place to do that?
So the town doesn't, i- if there is, um, like crime happening on the property, we have the right to go and secure it? Uh, most of these, I think all of these places are occupied, and we can't. It's not ours for a year anyway, so if the owners.
Are there people living there?
So if the, if the owners decide they wanna open all their windows and let all their water run, it's, it's on them.
That's right, they.
We can't, we can't go in.
Yeah, we can't go in for a year, and that's the same for everybody, not just the town.
There's a couple that are, there's a couple that would be, I mean, we'll probably see some bids on some of these, I would think.
I expect most.
You're, there's a couple that are gonna pay, that's for sure. But anyways.
We can't, we just can't tell them to get there.
It's a roll of dice. Let's hope, let's hope they're well advertised.
So that means we're gonna keep an eye on the properties on a regular basis to make sure that they didn't move out?
And the water isn't running out the front door.
Or the heat is turned off, or, you know, let, let the water stay on, uh, shut the water off. But if the heat's turned off, the water will find a way.
Well, yeah, well.
And have, and have another West Street.
At least look into the.
We could have another one of those.
The legality of whether, when we can.
Another street right now.
My concern is you wanna be careful about making sure you're not there before.
Right, follow all the rules.
Yeah, follow all the rules, as they say.
Are there any of these that are low enough, uh, there's one in particular that seems low enough not to be worth doing?
Well, for us, for us, we don't, we have no cost, so it's all just tax money and it's all revenue. If we had a lawyer doing it, it wouldn't be worth it.
Okay.
We have reached out to that gentleman and they have received our letters. They've ignored us.
And have, okay, that was my next question. Has everybody been approached with a plan?
Yep.
Or have tried a plan?
And two of these properties, they've sent money in already. They're just, they're getting ready to make the final payments. But we're not gonna stop, because that disincentivizes them to make the, make the final go, so.
Probably what we were talking about.
Yep. Any other questions? Whether it's, everybody understand the motion?
Keep your eyes and cross your teeth.
Yep. All those in favor?
I.
Those opposed? Okay, um, Lister's.
Yes, so the, the Lister's, they're, they've come into the twenty-first century and they'd like to buy two computers. They have one computer for three, three workers. Um, they'd like two more, and they'd like screens to go with those computers, so.
Screens or would it make sense to do laptops?
And they wanted desktops. Yeah, they didn't say they wanted laptops.
Because they might wanna take them out of sight.
That's what I'm thinking of.
With all of the new data being on, available, right, won't it be pretty soon we'll be able to get that all online?
We should be able to have that all online, right.
So they could have real-time data on site.
How do they, they're saying you have to buy the motors and the communication plans.
Well, they could at least pull it out, load it on the, there must be a way to get that stuff offline.
But it's costly.
No, no, they must get it.
Use your hot phone as a hotspot.
Pull it out offline.
Yep.
I don't know.
Check into it anyway.
I mean, I, I wouldn't.
But that's what they want.
We, what's the amount of money we're spending?
Uh, so it wouldn't, depending on how many screens they want per, it's not gonna cost any more than three thousand dollars. We have, each computer is six fifty plus screens, so a figure of not to exceed three thousand would more than cover it.
And if they decide, they may just wanna get one that's a laptop. I really would.
I can see where that would help a lot, especially with the new program that's coming on.
Reliability on laptops.
Yeah, I understand.
Not, not by the employee, but that, you know, they, they go to the bathroom, someone walks by, signs the laptop. Not by the employee, but that, you know, they go to the bathroom, someone walks by, signs the laptop. Chief's tied up for a minute, just to let you know, he's dealing with somebody in his office, okay?
Cool.
Thank you, Dave. But there's also breakage.
Yeah, I know, I just, this day and age, though, the desktop going by the wayside, but...
Yeah. Let's address it the way they present it, and if they want to change it, they can come back.
They're asking for a tool, good.
What they wanted.
Right, yeah, I mean, I, I just...
And if they, if they want to change, they may come back.
Right, if they thought that the laptops would be more expensive, and didn't want to, whatever, let them know, it's, we don't have a problem if...
Not to exceed.
To talk about it.
So that'd be, that'd be, you know, that'd be a good machine for a thousand dollars to be, almost by Apple Mac for them.
A tablet or an iPad.
Do tablets work in that environment?
You know what I mean?
Hmm.
iPad might be pretty nice. And you could get that with wireless.
Trousers are relatively inexpensive compared to laptops.
They're really looking for something to bang out some data entry, though, into the Nemec system. They're updating the files, and that's really what they seem interested in. It wasn't so much using technology out of town, out of town colleagues, they wanted it.
They want a full keyboard to work with and everything else. You get a laptop, you can get... By the time you put the new keyboards...
They got the soft...
Have you seen the new keyboards that project onto the desk?
No.
There's no keyboards, just projected. It's ridiculous.
Well, we're gonna make the motion as not to exceed...
Not to exceed three thousand, and we're there.
Yep. Entertain that.
So would you like a motion for to, uh, not to exceed three thousand dollars to buy computers and monitors or laptop?
From the listers.
For the listers?
From the listers equipment fund.
From the listers equipment fund.
Perfect.
Suck 'em.
Did you get all the...
She's working on it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we asked a lot of questions, but are there any other questions? Are there any other questions?
Uh, well, this time.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
It's too late now.
Yeah. Okay. Watch your time.
So I set up the projector, and I hooked it all up into my laptop, you guys wanna bang it out on the big screen?
It's up to you, John.
It blinds Bob.
No, I'm, Bob's going around the corner. I learned that lesson.
I think we got it pretty good on our paperwork.
Well, he's got it all set up.
It's mainly for the people at home.
It's so people can see the process, you know?
I don't want people from flat homes to see.
Well, I was just thinking, I got it all right here, I wasn't thinking about that part of it, but flying for me.
John's getting a lot of pickings tonight.
Can I see what's right here?
Long way to wait for candy, yeah.
You can use Jase.
Yeah, I feel, I feel more warmer now, Bob. Well, lost heat on once, I gather, what we can...
Bob, did you get a new pickup?
I did.
Oh, wow.
I did, I...
Is it red?
No, it's not, it's... They call it stone gray, but I think there's a more ruder term for that.
Fits in with everyone else, so now you can't see it done.
Well, mine is, mine is stone gray, too, yeah.
Brindle.
Whatever. Something like Jase?
Okay. Oh. Would you give me my, uh, agenda?
Oh. There, my alarm's not going off now.
So what it say is, auditing department.
Yeah, I can't read my notes.
You gotta flash right on your, on your...
I know, we can send to that, put that new place and get that stain to go on your head with the light there.
There's more light up front here.
I have eye strain of the workers.
Yeah, workers got...
Vision care.
Basically, this is just, um, my salary and Deb's salary. Mine is sixty-five percent of my total salary goes to this line item, and Deb's is forty percent. The rest of our salary goes under water and sewer. And it's just the regular two point two five percent of union rate. So that's all that one is. I had a hundred fifty on the paper, so I'll chop that to a hundred.
Yeah, we have to.
So do the meeting.
Is that sufficient?
Do we spend it?
The only thing I spend every year is a loan to the Vermont Government Finance Officers Association, and that's like thirty bucks, forty bucks.
Extravagant.
It gets me reduced training, because I'm a member, but I'm not going to Warner, I'm a failure. You know, and if they have something relevant in Rutland, I would, but most, sometimes it's been on a payday, you know? Monday when it's payroll, or, you know, so, nothing's come up lately. And then same with the travel, fifty dollars is fine, it's just the place marker, in case we had to listen to it.
Questions? Auditors, do we have three auditors? Does anybody have anything else for Jenny on that?
No.
Okay.
I have a question, but the last three actuals on here on our auditing department is, they've never taken their money. Are we just leaving it there in hopes that someday we'll get some auditors that might want to do something, or?
I think we are hoping that eventually we get...
Yeah, I kinda question.
An active audit.
I don't know if they are.
Well, I was gonna be, that was my question, do we have auditors?
Is Glenn still one of the auditors, or?
He is.
Do we have a... Is it an auditor, I think he's on, I don't know.
Does he just not take his pad?
That's okay.
Have we, has he participated? Hasn't, no.
Not to my knowledge.
Well, I just asked. It, it may be worthwhile before the, the end of the petition season to put a ad in the paper for all the open positions that are electable and need to be petitioned. Like maybe right after the first of the year, because we, that's only gives us two weeks or so, right? Three weeks?
Even the non-elected.
Can you...
Even the non-elected, yeah.
Right, can you advertise, can you cherry pick like that legally?
I don't know.
You must be able to.
Yeah, my town does it, not saying it's right or wrong, but they do it.
Well, if it's an open position, then nobody's...
Well, yeah.
Right, it's not a biased thing, it's just...
No, we're not saying we want this one to win, we're just saying we want somebody to be in that position.
Be in that position, right.
Yeah.
Select them.
What does the auditor do?
Auditor?
They're literally supposed to audit our books?
Yeah. And they're actually supposed to...
But you're getting it, you're...
Yeah, no, I know, we're getting it, but we're also, they're actually also supposed to do the town report.
Yeah.
They're, they're actually supposed to be responsible for the town report, which I think...
I do think sometime we put on the ballot to vote away, because we do have the annual professional audit, but the town says they don't.
Yeah. The town likes the idea of having local do that.
They have years.
We just gotta find somebody that wants to do it, and wants to...
And just doesn't want the name of being an auditor, yes.
I mean, you certainly can't put that town report together for three hundred dollars.
No, no, it would be, it would be, it would be an unfair question. But it, it wouldn't be unreasonable to ask them to consult.
And Beverly is right after us to do our auditors, or our reports, rather.
She hasn't talked to me yet, she doesn't, no, it doesn't matter.
I was gonna bring that up later on.
She was just wasting her breath until after the first. I work better under pressure.
Okay. I'll remind her of that.
So what happens if the select board wants to make a change to...
Has to be done by vote, to, to what?
To their stipends.
We can't.
I know that. No, you can, the auditors, the last time the auditors did it.
Right.
Right, so if the auditors are not present for, there are no auditors, then...
Solid question.
Tom, Tom Diddy, vote.
I don't know.
So Jenny's...
Good question. We'd have to call VLCT to find out, yes.
Yeah, there must be some kind of contingency.
Should be.
Yeah. There's a lack of auditors everywhere, you know, people don't do that.
Well, it's been voted out in a lot of places, too.
Yeah.
That and, uh, town grand juror and other, other things.
Um, if anybody has anything on the auditor, we will go, we will move on.
Just on the professional services that, what is that?
That's the audit.
That's the actual audit that you stayed here?
That's that one there.
Yeah.
Right. Um... I will, I'm gonna jump around here a little bit, so Jenny doesn't have to stay here all night.
That's alright, Joe, just looking at that, does that include the two fifty for the asset stuff?
No, that does not include the asset.
So we better put that in.
Are we gonna do that again, though?
We told them we're gonna do it every year, yeah.
What's that?
They keep the, they maintain the database and the assets and do all the depreciation.
That's in the auditing department?
They always used to do it for the contract price, but now they're charging two fifty to do it. But considering the mess that was made of it, you know?
So if you want to add two fifty to it, pump it up to twelve, five fifty?
Twelve, yeah, please.
That's the wrong way, Joe.
What?
It's the wrong way.
Yeah, it's, no, we'll get there.
Yeah.
No, we'll get there.
I hear you.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's talk, let's talk debt management, and then we'll go to benefits. But debt management is page nine.
Yeah.
Joe had some.
Yeah.
This should be the last payment. So that's the same for the principal. The principal and the interest.
Page nine.
Yep.
You're talking about the fire truck?
Yep.
Yes.
This is the last payment?
I have twenty twenty-one.
Special events.
That's good.
That's what we're working on, so that should be the last one.
Debt management, there we go.
That's good.
There, so when we talked about the, um, fuel tank payment, uh, payment for the fuel tank, um, I put it in the account for the town, the muni building account. Any appropriate...
Municipal building?
Yeah, municipal building. Um, I think we'd like to move that from there into this line. That won't change your bottom line, it's just moving money around.
Yep.
Is that's okay with the board?
That's a better point, so...
It is, that's what Jenny, she's thinking, it's no sense in not putting it there.
Well, it is debt.
It is.
It's not, you know, you're kinda like, you're hiding it, if you...
But it's just a one, that's just a one-time deal, too.
And the auditor's gonna ask for long backs.
Well, it's a five-year deal.
Well, yeah, but I mean, still...
It's easier for them when they come back, and, okay, here's all our debt there. Like you said, we don't put it on the books as a long-term debt, but it certainly goes in the budget. We may want to report on that. And like Joe said, we're not adding more money, we're just, I'll create a line item and call it tank loan, or whatever, oil tank loan.
Okay.
I know you're done with O three O, but I did want to just touch base on those, because they changed. And, and Joe did add...
What page is that, Jenny?
Um, it's, it's under O three O. Do you still have O three O?
The public works towards the back of public works.
Oh, the pub, oh, okay, the O three O, O three O, the...
It is page fourteen.
Yep, okay.
I have it, it's page fourteen.
I was thinking, I was looking at a line item, not the whole...
And the only reason I want to talk about it is because, um, Joe did include the new, the new truck. You know, so your figures for FY twenty-one are fine. But this year, we're gonna be over expended. And that hap, just when it comes around, it's like, uh-huh, we spent fourteen thousand dollars over the budgeted amount. And that was because we had had that community bank loan, and then we got the state of Vermont equipment loan for the loader. It didn't come through until after the budget was already finalized.
Right.
And then the loan docs for the excavator marked signed until June thirtieth, but that was way after the budget was done. So that fourteen thousand two hundred dollar payment wasn't included in this, this fiscal year's budget.
Okay.
So both of those combined are gonna leave us over expended this year by fourteen two forty-six. So you might forget at the end of the year, but...
That's not in the budget, the budget in our hand.
We didn't have it.
That's what I'm saying, it's not gonna impact the budget in our hand.
No, because I've got all the figures now, we've got all the loans in for this year, yeah.
I, I don't want it to be confused with we're under budgeting, because we're, we're right where we need to be, in this budget.
Right.
Yes.
So does that mean Sam's gotta keep that equipment back?
Well, if they're looking at, if they're looking at those figures, they're seeing that...
I just need more money, I'd like some more.
We're over expended. And then on the interest part of it, we actually saved twelve hundred sixty-nine dollars in interest. So we're not so bad there, it's only gonna leave us over expended by a hundred fifty-one bucks.
Oh, that's good. Joe's gonna give us a nice corrective budget next time around.
This will not impact this budget, just to be clear, that what Jenny just said is not gonna impact...
It's not impacting which, which...
Yes.
No, but when it comes to be June thirtieth, when you're over expended, gee, did Jenny know what she was doing when she...
This year.
Her equipment loans.
Oh, we'll realize that, we'll miss the big notes.
Exactly.
That's not true, you know?
So we are now back at debt management? Or did you want us... We did, I didn't know before we went there, did we finish that?
Yeah, we kinda did finish it, yeah, there's really not anything, it's just the fire truck at this time and moving the...
Yep.
Moving.
Okay.
Yeah, that, moving that, um, tank loan is a better thing.
Okay, um...
Page seven?
Yeah, so, let's do, uh, the, um, transfer station, uh, benefits, let's do page nine, the benefits.
That'll be Jenny's.
That's Jenny's as well, I just want...
We just need to scroll that, uh, just a little bit. There we go. Oops.
Now, health insurance is down, is that just a different coverage for someone or something? Not that I'm complaining.
Starting with retirement?
Yeah.
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 So, um, retirement, I have it at forty-five thousand. This year, in June, the rates change, uh, July first, I mean, I'm sorry. So when you budget, it's just like with the insurance, half a year is one rate, half a year is the next. So this year, group B is at five point seven five, group C is seven point five, that the town has to contribute. For FY twenty, it's jumping to six, and seven point seven five. And then FY twenty-two is six point two five and eight. So that's why I said it's hard, you know, we can start six months with six percent, and then seven point seven five. It's all relative, because it depends, I mean, they work a lot of OT, you know? You just, you just don't know where that number's gonna fall, but, um, we've been okay. Last year, we were over by like two thousand dollars, and we paid from what we like did, but it all, it all went without, so... That's that, um, social security, same thing, that's based on income with overtime and that kind of thing, so we've got that at fifty-nine. We were a little bit over last year, fifty-seven, five eighty-three, from what both budgeted, so... And now we pretty much have full, everybody full staffed now, so... I don't want to cut that too short, yeah.
Well, we, we're, oh, no, excuse me, sorry, that's water, it's... Well, we, we're, oh, no, excuse me, sorry, that's water, nevermind.
Um, health insurance.
Well, actually, the.
We had gotten a memo earlier in the year, you know, before everything started. The league had sent an email around talking about this Blue Edge company. So I sent a request to have them bid, quote, and I, I only did that because there was still Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and our same plans. Versus MVP, you know, no one's gonna go for that, you know, we have the union to work with, but I thought, whoa, these prices, and if it's their same insurance plan, but it's cheaper, you know, that's great. But they declined to quote, and then later on, I found out the deductibles were a lot higher anyway, um, and the price was the same. So, at least I didn't put a lot of energy into it. So, there's a reduction, basically, we had a family plan that went to a two-person camp plan, so I reduced it by fifty-five hundred. Um, and in prior years, you know, we budgeted for a family, hired someone with no insurance, the boss. And then last year, we budgeted for two family plans, we hired a single, and then one with no insurance. So, you know, we've been, we've been saving money in our insurance, which is great.
For a while.
Well, for now. I, I didn't wanna chop it too closely because, you know, people's situations change, they could have a baby, they could get married. You know, so, but I did cut it, I did cut it back. Cut that out. Uh, let's see. Life and disability insurance, pretty much, that stays stable throughout, so I didn't do anything with that. Left it the same. Vision insurance, I chopped that by a hundred. There again, we had a family plan, then hired a single, so we saved a little money there. We're not, we're not talking big dollars, but. Um, unemployment insurance, this one was bizarre, because it used to include those big numbers, fifteen-five. That was when the league also had our employment practice insurance, and that's was combined with the unemployment. Now that we have that with Hickok and Boardman, um, this line item is strictly for our unemployment insurance. So the seven thousand, you know, this year and next year should be fine. Okay, so that one's easy. Workers' comp. We were quoted, our price this year, you know, our portion of it, cause we paid eighty percent, sent water sewer face to twenty, was about thirty-nine thousand. I left it at forty-two, only because there again, six months of the year will be a new rate, and they're gonna have enough history on us next year that we might, we're still getting good rates, cause we have no experience modification. So I just, you know, it scares me to, yeah, chop that too much. Um, plus, we'll have a workers' comp audit done by them, and we don't know, you know, whether that, we could get money back, we've gotten money back from the league before, or we could pay, you know, two thousand or something. So that's why I left that level.
Please jump in with questions if anybody has anything.
We haven't gotten down to the HRA fees yet. That's, that's, um, this one's just the HRA fees.
And let's see, the property casualty, that's now all of Hickok. I reduced that a little bit to sixty-eight thousand, based on what she, you know, submitted to us. And that still accounts for more in the six months coming with the new policy. So we should be covered there, so we saved a little there. Uh, let's see, public officials' liability, this one got a little wonky, cause last year, the quote said twelve hundred. But, you know, we got the bill, and it was eighteen fifty-two. So, we're gonna be a little short, six hundred and forty dollars already. Um, but anyway, I upped it to the eighteen fifty-two for FY twenty-one. And it was odd, because I don't even know how they quoted that low, because this year, we saved money because, uh, Joe was reduced in his bond, this is for like the bond, the bond payments for Suzanne, um, Danny, Roberts, and Joe. Okay, and HRA, that's always a fun one you can have. I left it at sixty, level funded, at a hundred percent, right now, the liability is seventy thousand two fifty. Um, I reduced that to sixty thousand. And you took five thousand away last year, and that's fine. This also includes Joe's buyout, and Jack Eaton has five thousand dollars a year retirement for three years. So that's included in that. And it's hard to tell, now the figures don't look so good on the books, but December's a big push month for HRAs, you know, for the bills to be coming in. Um, and then, they have three months to claim those back bills. So it only gets a little tricky there.
So do you, do you, this is a little off, but do you, uh, build up that fund a little bit this time of year?
We don't build it up.
I mean, you keep a certain amount for HRA payment, for deductible payment.
Yeah, she'll just.
So you, you just, just move it as you have to?
Right, and that's when you get the email that I made five thousand, yes, absolutely. And that's when I would hit that line item. Every month, Joe and I get the bill, well, I get it, but Joe has to sign off on it, of where the money was spent, whether water sewer or O one O, and then I get that line item for those claims that month. And then the money's just fluid back and forth between the general fund and that HRA account. You know, so that's just moving money, so the money's available, but this line item is where you're really expending it.
Did you, did you say that you, you, you're keeping the HRA fees at sixty?
Yeah, no, that's, I, I made that change in the book back. I, I moved that, I moved that to fifty when I was tinkering with the budget. That should, that should be, this should be sitting at sixty.
You can make it fifty now, okay, just tell me. Did we, did we do that change on the sheet yet?
No, there's no changes been made, I was just playing with my budget.
Okay.
Hey, but you've never been over forty-four.
So, forty-eight was the highest.
I had a.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're right, forty-eight, okay, O one com.
Just a technical question, we, so we always basically guess at this one.
Not really.
Yes, right, absolutely.
Actually, really, we look at our numbers and we.
One year, we were a hundred.
If they used it all, we could potentially have a over budget, right? But the odds of that are very slim.
In FY seven, we were over a hundred and two percent over budget, you know, we used the hundred and two percent of the budget. Um, in FY eighteen, we only used fifty-seven percent of the budgeted amount, and last year, we used sixty-eight percent. So it's not even consistent, you know?
But, but the hundred and two percent was of budget, not of the maximum.
Right.
Okay.
Very.
Absolutely.
And if we, if we.
Every year, you get more.
I guess my question is.
Actuarial data.
Could we change, could we change our system on this one? And have, uh, for lack of a better, a reserve count that covers HRA fees to the max, and only put in what you took out last year, and just budget the real number of what you used last year to reimburse it?
Yeah, so the fund isn't what you go.
Well, you, you could just fund the amount we have in our budget the first year. And you've always seemed to have twenty thousand extra, and you could build it up that way. And there'd be no change to the budget, but eventually, we'd get to the max, and we would just level fund what we need.
So you're saying have a separate reserve account?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I'm just asking a question.
The, the only thing you'd have to do is just authorize, somehow authorize those guys to pick out, pick out of the, uh, uh, the fund, but I don't see that as a big deal.
Then we could use a real number, I feel like we could explain this pretty easily at town, we just wanna use a real number for.
Right.
Kinda like sand and gravel, you mean, buy what you needed, what you used last year.
So this year, we would keep it at whatever number we come to, and, and then, then we would have that next year to, to put in. Right. Or are you thinking of trying?
My mechanism may be wrong, I was not advocating for not fully funding it in one year.
No, 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 I know. Good. Well.
Can, can you say that emergency reserves can come in there?
Well, if you're gonna say that, then put it down to thirty thousand.
Well, it's not an emergency reserve, it's.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
You can just put it to the voter of thirty thousand of your surplus, or whatever you wanna say, create a reserve account to be used for HRA reimbursement.
I was trying to do it out of the natural budget.
And then next year, next year, well, you can't set up a reserve account without voting the voters.
Exactly.
Next year, next year, then you could just put it as a line item under your reserve allocations, and the voters have, you know.
Is it something we could take out of our underspent funds?
I think we're just trying to.
Like you said, you've been saving money every year on that line item.
So the.
Yeah, but we can, not really a reality, if, although that's, it's part of the sixty thousand dollars.
Right.
Sure, we're taxing you on sixty thousand, or we're taxing you on fifty-five thousand. So it's real, it's just then, we didn't spend it, so that goes into the fund balance if we didn't overspend anywhere else.
So, if we made that, knowing where we are right here today on this one right here, it looks like our actual though was, was thirty-four, one fifty, one fifty-four? If we made that forty, if we changed that sixty to forty and took twenty thousand.
You could.
That's.
Your maximum exposure though, if everybody uses their full plan, is what, seventy-five, seven?
Seventy.
Seven.
Um, for singles, it's thirty-five hundred.
Yeah, but what's the total?
What's the total?
Oh, whoa, whoa, sorry, seventy thousand two fifty.
So there's a chance that you could be over budget.
There's a chance, but it's.
But it's very slim.
Yeah, it's a slim chance. I mean, I.
So we've split it in the middle, that's how we got to where we're.
Right.
I mean, you could fund it, uh, in, in my opinion, you could fund it fifty and still be pretty, pretty safe.
I think so too.
Definitely.
And that was my opinion, I think that's what my recommendation would be.
And it, it certainly looks like we'll need to be, that's an easy one to, to, to chop down.
Well, it looks like, on the averages, forty-five would be pretty safe.
I was gonna say the same thing.
We just have to be ready to pull from the fund balance that. There's the potential you could go over in a bad year. But historical averages, it would only be three thousand.
Right.
That's our worst. What's forty-five to your bottom line, your budget?
Knocking that to forty-five thousand, that makes it that much easier to get to three percent.
I'm on four.
I don't, I don't stand very well with myself.
I don't, yeah.
You have a problem? You just have to have mechanisms to where you're gonna take the, if, if you're wrong.
Right.
Yeah.
If it's higher, then where would you get the money?
The interesting part of, of that whole actuary thing is, we're dealing with a much younger workforce here, all of a sudden, which is helpful, and should, theoretically should put us, um, in a, in a more comfortable position even than we have been.
Except for, of the young families that are growing.
Right, right.
Right.
Well, yeah, I mean, yes.
That's, that's where the actuary, the younger crowd works against you in that.
Those, those deductions are expensive.
I, I like the fourth box.
You need the ones in the middle.
That's a really good look, looking number compared to sixty.
Yep.
Let's stay there until we get scared, and we just have to come up, it's, it's, well, it, we have to come up with a, we have to come up with a.
We just want to do Joe's buyout next year.
Let's see what happens with, um, December, if something drastically changes.
Then December, Joe.
In our real numbers by the end of the year.
Yeah.
Maybe we reevaluate.
Yeah. Anything else there? Anything else, Jen, from, from there?
Doesn't, it does the opposite of what I was gonna.
Um.
And we'll, we'll.
It's the same thing in the end.
We'll look into starting a reserve account for next year rolling around, right now, it's kinda late for that.
Yeah, I like the, yeah, I like the idea.
Well, I guess I'm, yeah, just wondering if we could say whatever is in that line item extra next year.
Whatever's left.
I wonder if I can make that an automatic, though, can I, can I ask the voters this time if there's extra in there for next year, but I want them an actual number, so I probably can't put that on a morning that way, right?
You would need an actual.
It's pretty vague.
I'm gonna need more time to pull something like that together and get.
That's okay.
If, if, everything has to be done then by the fifteenth of next month.
Don't worry about it.
We can get it, but it's gonna take time.
You're the nervous type, aren't you?
Yeah.
I like to have things ready to go, I don't like to blast many stuff.
You have that nervous twitch over there tonight, I don't know.
You guys are right there, man, I'm telling you, you're right there. This is gonna be a really solid budget after today.
It'll be better than the, the one, the traumatic one.
As long as there's no cell problems.
Herb, Herb, everybody happy, yeah.
Anyway.
Scared. All right, um, let's move on. Um, reserve, uh, is there anything else you want to be part of, Jen?
I don't need to be.
I mean, you're welcome to say, I just, if, if you wanted to dust and get out before, you're welcome to. You're more than welcome to stay, if, if there's no other, we'll go back to transfer station.
We just have that in reserve?
Um, revenues, allocation, fund balance, and ballot questions, but none of that is gonna be set in stone tonight, I bet.
Will you be there for that, Joe?
For.
Originally, you wanted me there for the revenue and the allocation of fund balance?
Uh, yeah.
Do you, or, I mean.
If you wanna stick around, yeah, it's always nice to have a, have a backup.
Okay.
We can do that again, Bob, be careful.
Well, let's do, uh, let's do transfer station, and let's get back on track, that's page seven.
Okay, so for, for transfer station, we talked about salaries earlier in the process, but there is a little bit, I think, you can take out of, out of salaries, I budgeted, I think it was like an extra six K just in case, um, staff took all of their time off. So, uh, what's it say on that sheet, Glenn, is it four thousand dollars?
Oh, yeah.
You see?
Yeah, yep.
I tucked my paper with the way.
I feel comfortable pulling four thousand on salaries.
Okay.
Transfer station reduced by four thousand currently, maybe six thousand, yeah?
Yeah, so I, I think you'd be okay there.
You take that down to fourteen thousand, you're saying? Less than what it was?
From sixty-eight thousand minus four thousand, so sixty-four thousand.
Okay.
Or you need to. Bring it down to sixty-four.
By another four? Okay.
So my, my budget, or my.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's already at sixty, I was tinkering with this guys, I'm sorry, yes, leave it at sixty-eight, where it sits on the screen.
Okay, which is not what I have, so I have seventy-two.
Yeah, I did too.
It should be seventy-two, I changed it earlier while I was playing with this.
So down to sixty-eight, would, would you did the additional?
That's the four thousand.
That's the four thousand.
Yep.
It goes sixty-eight, radio.
I like that. And that, that's the, every reduction of fourteen, yeah, okay.
Four thousand, four thousand is about fifteen. That's, that's the sheet.
Yeah.
How can, how can you take, how can you take four grand out of that?
Salaries are less than what that number is. That number includes two thousand for DPW to come in if they need to do any working down there, and it also includes an extra few thousand for, um, That number includes two thousand for DPW to come in if they need to do any working down there, and it also includes an extra few thousand for, um, in case we need to backfill if somebody takes vacation. Cause we still have to pay for vacation time, and we have to pay for somebody covered.
It didn't change your coverage, it changed what your coverage costs now.
What it costs.
Cause I may have to pay two people if somebody takes vacation, yeah, if that makes sense.
What else you got?
Okay. We'll be right along unless anybody. Has questions. Other purchase service, just reflecting actuals. What does?
Yes.
Other purchase service, I keep, I never can remember what that's. That re.
Let's look it up.
Is that recycling, or is that?
No, I had to look it up, I, I don't memorize what all of these are.
What?
What's the number? Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, the.
Sixty-three hundred sixty-six.
Sixty-three fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
Oh, Comcast. Uh, stuff like that on there, Comcast, we canceled the closed circuit TV, so.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
But you're up a thousand.
Yeah, and that's, that's for the actuals.
Okay, okay, that's what I was wondering, it, it does look that way.
Yeah, we, we kept, we kept riding that line there, so.
Okay.
All right.
Um, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask this question later, but when you talk revenues, but how close are we to those numbers in the revenue?
For transfer?
Yeah.
Transfer station did really well last year, I think they were actually over.
They made over more than revenue.
Yeah.
So we're getting, we're getting close to, we're getting breaking even with.
Closer.
Yeah, we're being closer to that number, yes.
And the, the number we were off at one time was twenty-five grand.
Well, it's more than that.
Three than that.
It was like eighty.
No, it wasn't. We were down to twenty-five grand. Oh, yeah.
Well, you got down to it, but at one point, we were way high.
Yeah, 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 I'm just saying. So we're, that, we're, what's the word, Ron?
Directional.
Incorrect. Thank you.
I think once I get the scales set where they're supposed to, with the punch cards where they're supposed to be, everything will be even better.
You think the scale's up?
It's probably there. They're paying, it's only a dollar seventy-five per ton, and the punch tickets are two dollars, so it's not.
The scale's gotta be up.
Yeah, but it's not equaling out to where it should be, cause you, you get, you know.
You can't come up to the right.
Right, it's not, so we've just gotta change that around where it's, you're paying two dollars a ton for what you bring in.
Yeah.
Well, it, it may come to the point where we gotta direct everybody through the scales and, 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 and get a. And get, get an idea, well, it, it's, yeah, it would be, but.
Nightmare.
It would be a nightmare, it's, it's, we would have to.
We would, we would fix the not being able to hear.
Wouldn't we, wouldn't we be better off charging more on the scales than we are right now? Wouldn't, shouldn't we be charging more on the scales than we are now?
Yeah.
Technically, you're, you're trying to incentivize the scale, right? Bags are always a little more expensive. You want people to go across the scale and get an accurate number, cause you never know quite how heavy that bag is.
In the transfer station, we wanted to put a new computer down there, didn't we? Where is that?
Um, in the process of.
Yeah, that, that's his budget.
Okay, sorry.
All right.
Oh, yeah. I'm supposed to have a screen in there this last year, never showed up.
Well, you got to June to use that seven eighty.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Tire disposals, are we gonna get rid of some tires down there pretty quick?
She was supposed to have already called. So I don't know, they just ain't showed up or.
Probably gonna wait now till the ice melt solve them.
All right. She didn't call. I've, I've been on to her and, so. I'm trying to, I'm trying to keep her going, but she's actually having some difficulty with some people there that are not doing nothing at all. And she's doing it all, and, so, but.
I mean, I went down there one time, just helped with the hammer and took the ice off the tires. Get rid of. Well, let's keep on, let's keep on a budget and. First, I will be later. Anybody see anything else that's? I didn't see anything. Eye opening?
No.
Okay. And we will, we will say that we are through that at this point. We want benefits already, right? Yeah, we've already done benefits. Uh, we are. Let's see, we are at reserve allocations, page sixteen. Page ten. Page ten? What am I looking at? I don't know, I don't either. Okay. We got enough money in reappraisal now, we don't need to add anything to that this year?
There's a ton of money in reappraisal.
While you're looking at that transportation and, uh, Bridge Pier also.
Reappraisal has more than two hundred thousand dollars sitting in there though.
Gonna probably take that.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're at it.
First line item there?
Go ahead.
Well, I was just looking at that first line item, and we're, we're seeing seventy-nine point zero zero. The, that thirty-five thousand, can that be changed to thirty thousand? When I, I look at our actuals, right?
Yeah, but what have we got that we're gonna need replacing down there now?
What, what are we looking at?
Public Works.
First line item, seventy-nine zero zero.
Public Works.
Uh, reserve allocations, Public Works vehicle.
Yeah, so for, so for that one, the, the capital budget calls for thirty thousand dollar deposit every year, this is actually more money than what the board thought they needed. I actually recommend to cut this down to thirty.
That, that's where I made that up myself.
At this point, we'll take your recommendation.
Can you actually meet your capital budget needs in the next several years?
The next several years, it is possible to reach our capital budget needs.
With that number?
With that, oh yeah, that's the number that's required.
All right.
But that also requires, um, fund balance to not, it requires fund balance to be put on pause for Department of Public Works until next year for use. If, if we blow, if we blow through that fund balance this year, then there won't be money for next year. And you can say, well, we did it last year, but then you're still sitting kinda skewed with your, with your budgeting.
How about seventy-nine oh four, streets and sidewalks, we aren't putting anything there?
No, I have no money there.
What's in that?
Streets and sidewalks has two hundred and forty thousand, there is money coming out of that for mechanic street.
Like a hundred ninety or something?
No, it's not a hundred and ninety.
Ninety.
Oh, yeah, something, yeah, ninety-two, I don't remember exactly.
That's why I have to, you know, I have enough to.
One hundred or ninety.
Also, also in that line, so I also made a recommendation for police, police vehicles, um, the capital budget, uh, requires ten thousand dollars to be added. Um, it's at eleven-two right now, I would recommend to cut that back down to ten.
Which one's up?
Police vehicle.
Police vehicle.
What's in that, I don't have in front of me, what, what do we have in that at this point?
Police has, they have twenty-six, twenty-six three seventy-seven. Nope, I'm, I'm sorry, twenty-three one seventy-seven.
So that's thirty-three, okay. Okay, other questions, comments? How come we're not putting anything in the Newtown garage?
Do you want me to change the police, do you want me to change police vehicle?
Change ten? Yeah, I think so, everybody comfortable with that?
As long as your capital. You're following your capital budget, I'm happy on you.
But I, if you, I don't see how you can kind of, how you can cut it.
I'm having a hard time seeing that far, but I.
I mean, everything goes up, you, you can't cut something out and then when you need it, oh my God, we don't have no money. I mean, it's.
But he's, he's, he's got a plan for.
We got a plan to get there, but some of the things we still have. Have to get the tax rate to something doable. And the two largest chunks that we have is Public Works and, and Police to go, go get it, so, it's to get there, none of these are paying less, they're painful.
Sounds like you guys gotta work on that, the, the. You got it on the parking lots, uh, to, to agree on what the maximum.
Right.
Capital reserve.
Capital reserve. We definitely, like, every time we get here, they say the same thing and think the same thing, yes.
Cause then you could just point to the policy to say, no, we're on track, or we gotta adjust.
And I did ask about the Newtown garage, we're not putting any money in that?
Yeah. Well, it's nice to tuck away like seven thousand dollars here and there, it, that garage is four hundred and fif, four hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you just take that, that seven thousand dollars, it would take you a hundred years to get to a Newtown garage. You, you use that money, if you combine that money with something else, you could actually do something with it, in my personal opinion.
And when we do build a Newtown garage, we're gonna be looking at USDA funds or something along those.
I think the idea was to have a match. Or the match.
The match, or probably, or, uh.
The idea was to have like ten percent of that four hundred and fifty thousand.
Not, not to fund the whole thing.
Right.
How much is in there now?
Seventeen?
Town garage.
Forty-seven thousand.
No.
So we're on track. Ten percent.
We're, we're.
Yeah.
We're on track to do.
We're, if they want, well, they probably want twenty percent, but.
Probably.
So we got twenty percent of two hundred and fifty thousand.
We add more money in, we offset.
You know what, if, if some, some money did pop up, there's always grant match funds.
Well, we have grant match.
Right, right now.
Does that, yeah.
So al- also in allocation, allocations under Uni building, um, the board just moved four thousand of that out to debt management.
So that's three now?
So it's gonna bring down to three, that was the, for the computers.
Okay.
But I am asking to add seven back in. Uh, we just cut a ton of money and the town, town does need IT, we, our, our, our server is, our server's fifteen years old.
I was gonna say, that's gonna, that's gonna be a boondoggle here one of these days.
Suzanne's computer, it, it's having a hard time reaching the bank system now, it's so old. So I wanted to kick, I wanted to put it down the way I really did, but at this point, it's.
Well, we can't be, if we can't put ourselves in a hole.
What's the balance in the municipal, or are you cleaning it out pretty well with that bigger project?
Oh, yeah, Uni building is, yeah, Uni School building is smoked. Um, we, there's a hundred and thirteen thousand there, a hundred is, um, committed to the building.
That's what's happening. You gotta keep putting something in.
So I, I know it's not the direction we wanted to go with that, but.
We'll take that two thousand out of restoration.
Two thousand out of restoration?
Yeah, well, that'll help, if you're seven.
Don't we?
Should that not be there?
Right, remember, we took it out of revenue and the restoration fund is mandated by statute that we put that in a reserve account, so you don't have to fund it.
Oh, look at that.
So we take that two.
Wait, wait, how's that work?
Way back when, when it was established.
So it's funded somewhere else?
No, it's, there was always state statute that two dollars went to restoration. But the board at the time said, I wanna see it in the revenue and then pay it out the next year.
That's gonna be a tough.
When Herb got here, he put it in the budget.
Right.
It kinda messes up because if you look at the numbers, I have to put in that account exactly what it's collected. So it's never gonna match. But this way, we collect it all year, and you'll see it in revenue, even though we're not budgeting the revenue. Uh, it'll be in that line item under revenue, what we're collecting. And then, I, before June thirtieth, I'll move it into the account.
To the, to this.
Right, so it's not our budget because it should be going into the reserve fund.
All right.
Automatically, but no sense doing that every month. I'll just do it before.
We gotta add your seven back in.
Nobody has said I could do that.
I don't think you need to take that out, I.
Right.
Put a seven, put a seven back in.
Keep the seven to a total of ten?
Yes.
It was, well, it was three thousand dollars for computers and that's seven thousand dollars for a server.
Right.
For a total of ten thousand dollars in that account.
Cause that server just go up and.
Yeah, the server scares me.
Well, that's done, you're done.
We're at seven, put it back to seven, and then you may have to take a little out of your account.
Right, put it back to seven, let's not go to ten.
Seven thousand dollars for a server.
I didn't.
Uh, the server company, big guy got a quote for, for swap, to swap it out with what we have with the newest version of that, seven thousand dollars.
We really need to get some new ideas.
We need.
That might mean breaking away from NIMRAC even.
No, 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 it's, it's, it's just a piece of hardware. I mean, network, we, we just have a computer, a server is identified by the software on it.
Right.
It doesn't have to be a big rack and all this hardware, that's, that's the seven thousand. It could be just a computer sitting on, off to the side of your desk.
That's all it is?
Right, but seven thousand dollars. Ours is just a computer, it's just, it's got more terabytes and, and test for speed, but it's, it's more expensive than six hundred dollars per laptop, for a, a desktop, don't get me wrong. But it's seven thousand dollars.
So if I can get it for cheaper, I obviously will, but this is the quote that I got from the guy, gave him, I gave him all of our data and said, this is what I got.
You'll have to.
I don't want it too fancy.
You'll have to put it out to bid anyways, right?
Uh, yeah, we'll need a couple quotes for this, if it's over five thousand.
The problem is, though, if you put it out to bid, you have to tell them what you want.
Yeah, I understand.
To, to be, to be consistent, have a.
Apple to apple.
Apple to apple comparison. What I'm suggesting is you get some people in here to give you ideas on what you should have. And then, once you establish what you should have, then you put it out.
So another three grand for study.
No, no, if they want the business, they give you an idea.
Yes.
Okay.
So where are we here?
Well, we're, we're just on the, we just went back to seventy thousand municipal.
On municipal, yeah, and then we're, we're not funding restoration, correct?
Right.
That's correct.
That's.
But you are.
We are.
We're doing.
It's, it's coming through revenue, so, and it, so it's not something we have to tax for.
A question on the line on seventy-nine oh eight, the bridge repair. Is, I take it that's not the Adam Street. Help given us, or that, if that is, and we sit here saying it's an Adam Street top priority, I.
Bridget Fair's always been there before Adam.
Yeah, it's just a general.
Adam Street is the name that's put to it right now.
That's put to it right now, but it can be any bridge, but, but, and as we've been, it's been difficult with the, either, we've applied for grants and having. We applied for grants and haven't gotten them, applying again and everything else, but it's, but we, we need to fix Adams.
There is a, an option for a fifty, fifty split, right?
Right now, we're, there's two options, eighty twenty and fifty fifty, both options are on the table. We're gonna obviously try for eighty twenty first.
I would.
What would be our match on both of those?
It's what's.
Twenty percent of six hundred thousand is.
No, it wasn't as much.
No, it was.
It was six?
Six.
Okay, oh, that's right, I got three in my head.
Yeah. Somewhere between three hundred and a hundred and twelve.
Yeah.
My, my only question was when I didn't see anything there, I'm going, okay, that's not gonna, that's one of our priority items, it doesn't look like we're working.
It's, it's one of those, it's one of those things where the, the money we throw at this line item is peanuts.
Well, except you have seventy-three in there.
Yeah, yeah.
And if you're, if, three hundred is the fifty percent match, which is actually doable, cause you don't have to qualify, it's just there.
Right.
And then if he actually gets the other one, right, if you actually get the eighty twenty, you're real close. So, you know, another five to seven makes a difference.
Right.
In this line item, even if you think it is a ways away.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, what you, what you call it, guys.
Well, if we're serious about fixing the Adams Street Bridge.
Where, where are we now approaching our three percent? Joe?
Right.
Where are we at approaching our three percent budget increase here?
See, and that's why I don't do this every time we sit down, because it's like, where are we at now? I don't know, Joe, let's look.
You should. You should just bring that up and put it.
Well, you were gonna ask that question anyway, weren't you?
Well, we, we're gonna get it.
That can't be right.
Ken, we've talked quite a bit now.
We have.
You're at two percent?
Did you add that four thousand into the fire truck, just so it'd be there?
Yes.
You did.
That one, that one I just dumped it on the fire.
So I'm talking about putting in?
Five, just the same five that we've been putting in.
If we put that same five back into the bridge thing?
Cause I was playing with this, let's make sure I didn't do something stupid, which is impossible.
That's fine.
And say, we're at two percent, we'll raise an item, plus the dollar.
The goal, the goal should be two and four, but understanding.
Sam, Sam is sitting there going ka-ching, ka-ching.
See, to me, the goal was flat, but three was acceptable.
Three, well.
Yes.
You know what I mean?
See, this, that's what my mom says. This had changes. Sixty-six, that I thought we'd be talking about, so that goes up, this, this shows, uh.
What are you doing, Joe?
Uh, changing it. See, this is why I don't use this thing in front of everybody. Three forty, seven three forty, so I had proposed cutting a little bit.
And I can tell you, two, two point nine is better than three. Just looks.
We could figure that pretty easy. It's doing better than we were beginning with, Bob.
And then sand, and then thirteen five, thirteen five hundred, okay, let's see what it really looks like now. That's still at two nine seven. That's great.
Tentatively.
No, that's it, that's what it is.
Well. There's some rumblings over here about adding, adding money into the, the bridge fund again, so, let's get that squared away.
How, how realistic is the bridge grant, eighty twenty? Do you have matching grant funds that can pick up the difference at the moment?
Currently, with the funds we have, I can do three hundred thousand. With help, if we get, I could do fifty fifty split with, with the EDA, Vtrans, and then the town.
The funds you have.
With the funds I have. That, that's all contingent, I have two other.
That would eradicate some, uh, a lot of your reserves out.
Yes.
It would, it would melt it. But we could do it. Worst case scenario with.
That's the three hundred thousand, but if you get the eighty twenty.
Yeah, if we get that.
It's not so bad.
No, no, if you get that, it's golden.
Roll the dice for a year?
That's what I'm thinking, push the three hundred back a year, but if he gets the eighty twenty, we can do it.
We can do it.
Yeah.
Right?
Right, yes.
And then you're not really asking the voters for a whole lot of money.
Right.
It becomes a slam dunk. But the three hundred, I'm not sure the three hundred would fly in the vote.
I'm not either. There's a lot of people don't live on the south side.
Regardless of what the reasons are, I don't know that it would fly in, in, in the face of all of the increases that are coming down.
Yeah. You're talking one in particular. Yeah, yeah, I, I agree.
There's gonna be some scary numbers in March.
Yeah. If they do that. That's the problem, and then you're gonna have, it's gonna be a, a lot of people angry at everything, yeah, and it's, no, 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 no.
It's all timing.
Yep.
But if you can get the eighty twenty, then make it not about the dollars, or new dollars.
Well, that's, that's the thing.
Cause if you, if you got the eighty twenty, you, you need, you can do it out of reserves?
Well, you can take it, the, the bridge reserve is almost funding our.
Right.
Our. That's what I'm saying, you almost.
So you can put it on the. It's really very little new dollars.
No, little impact.
Yeah. Alright.
And, and that way, that's one way to get the bridge built.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No new dollars.
Yeah. Yeah.
Where we going from here?
Okay, um, we'll be right along. Revenues.
How'd you like that?
Why is it going out, going camping?
No, my wife says she will never go camping again.
Not for tests anyway.
My son says, why would you wanna pretend to be homeless? I like pretending, cause I can always come back to a house. Do I have a revenue budget? You got a revenue budget anywhere?
Yeah, we have a packet, so.
That's the next one back.
It's not in that, it's in.
It's the second, it was a separate.
Oh, was it, okay, yeah, okay, I didn't see that. I guess that's this one. Let's see what it looks like, right?
Can you make that down?
Oh, yeah, I can.
You wanna do an overview on this, or you just wanna go down?
Oh, yeah, I can give you just real quick, it's revenue, so. Budgeting for municipal revenues, it's always kind of just a hit and miss thing, honestly. Sometimes, for example, police revenue's up, sometimes it's down, so sometimes user fees are up, sometimes you're down, it's. I have yet to figure out a good way to, to predict, so, with that, these is, this is my best guess.
Do we know what we missed on the last audit? Cause he said that we were actually short on revenues.
Um, okay, yeah. Was it my ta- what's it? Yeah, eighteen, nineteen, we were shy by, it looks like a hundred dollars, no, fifteen thousand. From general revenue.
I don't see much hope for recycling income. No, you, you shouldn't.
That came mostly out of. Just trying to collect that.
I think where we, I'm looking at the police revenue, it'll look like about six hundred twenty K. It was a shortfall, or no? Wait a minute, proposing? I'm ju- I'm trying to put our actual against what we're proposing. Are we going to line, are we gonna start beginning the line item? What do you want to address?
Say that.
Do you wanna do one, one at a time, or just throw some out?
I suppose it makes sense to start at the top and work our way down, doesn't it?
So that first line, the current real property, it's at zero now, let's see, it's dashed out. Um, after all of the revenue, the li- all the lines below that are figured out, we'll take. That revenue and subtract it from the proposed budget, and that, what that remainder goes in that top box, that's how much we need to raise the taxes.
Right, not to be raised by taxes, right.
So that's why that looks wonky.
Okay, that's why it's.
Always looks that way here, Ron.
You're fine, but don't move, I can almost read it on the wall. I'm good.
Just a general question, I'm, I'm looking at different charges and fees, whether you're talking under twenty-three hundred for the general government or the town clerk. This year, didn't they do something in that period that increased the fees we, that we were charging? And I was expecting to see the, uh, revenue go up in fees, instead it went the other way, like on, uh. When, when I'm looking, town clerk fees, for example, if I go to the, the total on that, and I'm going, jeez. Uh, it seems like if we're charging more for things that we're doing.
But the recording did go up, it was forty-five, and recording is what the fee.
Seventeen thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars versus fourteen thousand, five hundred.
That, that is where.
But we're, you're proposing sixteen.
We actually got seventeen, six ninety-seven, and we're saying we're not gonna get as much, recording?
Hedging, hedging bet, that's if we have a really good building year and a really good sales year and.
And, and we, I, I agree with you, we, I.
No, I was just, I was just saying, it looks a little hinky.
No, there are a few of the fees that did go up, I thought that same thing, maybe we should increase, but I don't know what that's gonna look like.
So you're gonna be conservative and, okay.
It can't, it can't go up if nobody's building or nobody's putting in driving.
So it's.
How's it gonna go up?
And if, if we overestimate too much, Glenn, then we just short ourselves during budget time and we, we blow the.
Yeah, that's harder to eat up the other way, it's all.
Again, I, I guess I come back, it's more of a general observation. We seem to be, our, our tax rate, our taxes seem to be going up and our revenues overall for the town is going down. And the only way we can maintain a tax rate that you can, and, and address the affordability issue here in town. Is we've gotta start making more revenue. And, and that's in multiple places, that we need to make more revenue. Because the answer isn't just raise taxes, raise taxes, raise taxes. So, and, so I look at these revenue sheets and go, wait a minute. Okay, I'm all for being realistic, super conservative, I would rather. Push the limit a little more personally than be super conservative on the revenues.
You can get screwed very quickly on, on that.
It requires, what it requires is a plan and the willingness to go make revenues, which, which I'd like to see probably in, in the future. That we start doing some revenue planning, instead of, I'll get off the soapbox.
Makes sense. But putting the number here without the plan doesn't help us.
Doesn't, doesn't, doesn't help us if you don't have a plan, but for, for example, and I wanna, and I wanna pick on, I'll pick on. The, the chief police department for a minute. When I look at revenue for ticket and parking fines and the actual twelve thousand five oh seven. And either, I have, I have no confidence that we're gonna make twenty-five thousand in revenue. And then, and the next plan, so, without having, and I just, and, and I. I think that we need to have a plan to do that. It probably, I guess what I'm saying is if you, if that's a real number, good. If it's not a real number and needs to be less than that. Then we should make it less, that's, that's all. And from my standpoint, and I, and I, again, I don't mean to pick on the police department because I, I'm just using it as an example, it's an easy one to use as an example. But for any one of those, transfer station, like when you were talking, it was good to hear, Sam, when you were talking about. Hey, the scales and how we gotta get more parity between the scales and the bags, to me, that sounds like more revenue. And if we're missing an opportunity on, on, on that fee for revenue, then. We have to make up for it when we start talking the tax rate and what we're taxing. I just don't think we, I think we, we can do better at, at increasing revenues for this town than what we've done.
I got a question here on the SRO, SRO officer. All three zero zero. Fifty-three, seven thousand, fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-three is the actual for eighteen, nineteen. And nineteen, twenty budget is fifty-two, and we've raised it to sixty-six thousand, how come?
So you have actually two SRO salaries going, and correct me if I'm wrong, chief, the grade school has contracted us with a little bit of SRO time. Um, the high school still has their SRO and those folks got their pay raised, and so we increased the fee.
Yeah, so the contract is fifty-seven thousand for the school. And we did, we were allowed to, whatever the union negotiated, so we negotiated two point two five percent, so next year's contract about two point two five percent. So that reflects the SRO and security details, any of that other stuff that we do, basketball games, anything else is all in that line item, it's why it's sixty-six thousand. So we're projecting the fifty-seven thousand plus the sporting events and the other stuff that we do periodically throughout the year.
That, that, that includes overtime, obviously, and, I mean, for an SRO.
The fifty-seven thousand?
Yeah.
The fifty-seven thousand is all of the SRO salary and then the eight hours. And that's, not all of it's been on overtime, some of it's been on regular, so there is some balance on that.
The eight hours over here, but I mean, if he works, if the SRO works a basketball game or something like that, that's, that figures in the.
Yeah, that's covering, they're paying dollars for dollars, we're not losing money on that.
It looks like SRO is good, an example of good revenue, uh, when, when you're looking at police.
It's a matter of opinion.
Well, in, my opinion is it's good revenue, we don't do enough of it. And then when we take opportunities like the Benson contract that was putting seven thousand dollars of revenue and say, no, let's not do it.
No, it's not seven thousand dollars of revenue, though, it's not revenue.
It's, it's showing on this line as a seven thousand dollars, it's showing as a line item as a seven thousand dollars here.
It's, yeah.
The point I'm making is, I, I don't mind complaining about not making enough revenue on a police department. I understand that we tried multiple times to make revenue, like the devil's bowl, like, like the contract. And when we say, no, 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 I don't expect to sit here and beat anyone up over not making revenue, I'm just saying. The answer is we, we've gotta be more open and to making revenue. And it seems like we as a town are very close minded when it comes to making revenue, and I think we gotta, I think we gotta think out of the box a little bit. I can, like the, uh. Thought that Joe had earlier in the year about selling water. I said, don't care what it is, but we've gotta find some ways to generate some more revenue, or we're gonna, or I don't know how you control the taxes and how they're.
Don't forget, don't forget one thing, revenue is just another word for tax. Revenue is just another word for tax.
I believe, but what, what some of the revenues do, it has the actual users paying versus everybody paying. I, I think it...
I'll give you that.
Gives you some fairness, it equals a scale or something. And again, I'm not, I don't look for, don't have any suggestions, so I apologize in advance for that. I'm just saying that I think we, this, the revenue, we're falling short, and we can't continue to fall short on generating revenue.
Any others, anything specific?
Just a question under miscellaneous, I see the highlighted ten thousand dollars under interest income. Three zero point zero zero, just wondering, just more of an explanation.
Yep, so that's, this is, this is a new addition to the budget, well, the ten thousand is new. So the town has accounts that are generating interest for it. Instead of just rolling that, that money back into that account, the thought was maybe the board would like to use interest income as a way to offset taxes.
Well, why haven't we been doing that?
We put that interest into the, into the revenue system.
Where, where did the interest earn go before?
Back into the account. So interest came out of the big account.
That's why I asked the question.
You guys have a solid point. What is that account?
It's three hundred, over three hundred K, and changes what I looked at.
Which one?
Is what we're making.
It's just all of these accounts in the, all of the reserve accounts, right? Those, that money?
I believe so. Again, it gets back to, I'm going from a conversation that I had around, why not take some extra, when you find extra money, buy down the tax rate? And you got a very good education on, that's not always the best thing to do. So you get yourself in trouble, you pay now or pay later, that'll be grand. Well, that's the, that's part of the explanation I had, so I'm going, okay, that's good information. But this might, might be a way, I like the...
It's a sustainable plan.
Yeah.
Seems to be.
Because that interest will always accumulate, sometimes more, sometimes less.
What's eighty-three zero zero, miscellaneous income?
Sounds...
It's exactly that, John. So I think we had a, and Jenny, you might remind me, we had somebody, we rented a container down at the playgrounds to store our equipment in summer. The football teams came in and said, we like to do, use that, so they paid us seventy-five dollars, and we just left the container there, so they paid the fee. That money comes in as miscellaneous. It's just that we're just, if you don't know where to put it, kind of thing.
And it comes in and it goes out normally, you know, it's not like real revenue. So it can't, because that had to offset a miscellaneous expense on the other end that we paid, you know, in thanks, but it was just like a reimbursement.
That bottom number is relatively close to what we were usually at, four hundred thousand.
Revenues are tough.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I just, one of, one of the things, one of the things that I always say is, when we had the big surplus, one of the things, it was a lot more revenue than I thought it would be. There was unforeseen revenue, that, you know, and it just kind of rolled. But it's, it's a crapshoot, I know it is. So it's just a matter of keeping on top of it. So we leave that as it is, folks? Well, we got one other thing to do here. Oh, that's separate, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It looked like that the highway property tax took a pretty good jump?
Well, that has to match their expenses.
Oh, yeah.
The bottom line has to match expenses, so automatically they get that from the general fund.
Oh, okay, because I'm saying, what did we do that made that? Because that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar worth of increase was, I'm saying, what did we do, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
So that, that top line, like on the first page that we looked at where I said, we'll fill that in later?
We'll fill it in after.
That number is the filled in number later, yeah, that's going to be the, the budget for DPW.
Still got pie in the sky on stated highways coming up for next year.
Pie in the sky?
Well, you never know what they're, no, that's just... That's the, that's the cost per mile.
Yeah, that stayed pretty steady. Might go down a little bit, you took some highways out, right? No, we didn't take it out, no, we didn't, we didn't take no driveways out.
They're highways.
Are they highways or byways?
It's too bad the chair's not here to keep us on task.
Any other questions? No?
No, I almost jumped in that forever, I didn't go there.
Which one?
The one, the one on the number of miles of road, if you have anything, I don't want to write check back in state.
Louis Freiners would come back and haunt you. Kill the big stick.
It's the class two highway grant dollars that John's talking about, right?
Yeah.
That sometimes we get, sometimes we don't, and you apply for it every year for paving.
Right, yes. Okay.
Is the board, is the board comfortable with revenues?
Not unless you're going to go out and work for somebody else to give us the money. I'd prefer you added four hundred thousand more revenue. There you go. Yeah, tell them bingo. He's probably getting in trouble with that. Okay, allocation of fund balance?
Is, is the board comfortable with the budget?
At this point?
What's, what's the total, again, when you say is the board, is the board comfortable? Where are we, once again, with the changes?
Two point nine seven to increase.
And that includes, includes the appropriations?
Two point seven with appropriations.
Two point seven one with appropriations.
Because the percent change is less?
Yes.
It's a math thing, it's not that there isn't less money.
No, I, that's what I originally thought, I said, it's a math thing.
It just means that the appropriation amount didn't change much from last year. Or actually went down, right?
You'll see a small increase, I know the library, you talked about, yeah, the library's going to ask for a little bit more.
No, 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 but...
But overall, what was, what did we go to the voters with last year?
There's a zero percent change in all of them, at least to this point.
That's, that's really, but I'm, well, my question is, what was, what did we go on, say, last March? And where are we going this March?
Well, we won't know until the last day that you can turn it in.
The two point seven one is that?
Huh?
That's the two point seven.
That's the two point seven?
Joe, we won't know about...
Total difference to total...
What the voter articles are going to be in it, because they're voted on anyway, so...
Right, we only present your budget.
Right.
But so, I guess that, that's some of my, we've got all those articles we're going to talk about in warning right here. Are they in there?
Yes.
Because they always, they always get passed.
No.
So I mean, so if, if...
Like the rescue...
They're, they're, that's in there, right? That's, that was right.
All the by petition stuff is in there?
They're in there.
In the, they're in there, that's the two point seven.
You might see, so I've reached out to most of these groups. The library will see a slight increase, rescue squads said they're staying flat. Everybody else, I haven't heard, most people said they're staying flat.
Okay.
And that we can't control that anyway, that's not...
Right.
No, but it's, it's a reality, it's, it's big money, and so I just want to make sure.
And it's always yes, yes, yes.
And it's always yes, so we're pretty sure.
To the best of his ability, it's in there in the two point seven today.
In the two point seven, and last March, we went, I just, year over year, did we level?
You don't agree with that one?
Did we level, did we level budget from last year, or we, did we go up, we go down? That's my question.
We went up, two point seven.
We went up an additional...
Your budget went...
Our budget went up two point seven, that does not include that. Include the voted articles, does not include them.
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Okay. For the money that we had the voters approve last year, was this, this chunk of money?
Yes.
With what we've done right here, are we asking for this chunk of money or this, this much more?
We're taking our chunk of money.
That much more.
Two point seven.
So, and the point for, and I don't know where you want to have this discussion, the point after, if it went up two point seven, the question, if I'm asked the question, budget went up an additional two point seven, why did it go up?
Because there's inflation, start with that, that's a two and a half, three percent.
Okay, okay, we knew that, we knew there was going to be two and a quarter, that it went up. Okay? Or no?
No, you can't...
Can't do it that way.
That's just salary.
That's just out, I'm talking about salaries.
Not all of it.
It is, yeah.
It's not a dollar for dollar.
Exactly.
But if, but if you, again, I'm just trying to...
That is a big one.
Trying to boil it down to say, it went, it's going to go up two point seven. There was some salary increases.
Salary?
Am I right in saying that our Department of Public Works, we added an extra half head? Because we did.
And paving.
And we did some, and we, and we're doing some paving, I'm just looking for...
Benefits always.
Benefits always.
Yeah, but the salary, pay and benefits are going to go up.
And a bunch of machinery.
And, and we bought some new equipment.
Didn't help you.
I'm, again, I'm just trying to go... Where, where'd that money come from? It's not just, okay.
But then over and above that, you've got appropriations at two hundred and something thousand.
No.
People don't understand that.
Every year, that's on top of our budget?
No, I thought, no, I thought that you said the appropriations were already in.
No, they are not.
Yes, they are.
John, yes, they are. I don't get how...
Why the hell can they be?
They are, because, because they keep saying to the appropriations...
They're proposing FY twenty-one.
They're all in.
Those, those appropriations are in place.
At the end, at the end...
So they're level funded then?
It's not in there, and then it's in there. There's a net, and then there's a net.
Shouldn't be in there.
That's what dilutes...
It's in the number percent.
I'm telling you, it's a math thing, you did go up.
Yes.
But it's a math thing. Why you're, you get what I'm saying? Your budget went up two point nine seven, and your appropriations did, may have gone up, may have stayed the same. But when you look at the whole budget, that dilutes the percentage that the whole thing goes up, because that bulk stayed level.
It's, it's stayed level.
Okay.
It's a percentage gain.
I'm good with it now.
Okay.
Maybe, yeah.
Okay, and that, that...
We do this every year.
Yeah, I just, first, first time through, budget problem.
So that's the problem with talking about this in a percentage and not a dollar.
Yeah.
The dollar amount that you're asking for, when, the budget dollar amount that the town needs does not include the allocations, the dollar, not the percentage.
Yeah, it does not.
Your budget doesn't...
Sixty-four thousand dollars for the appropriations, correct?
Yes.
We have more than that, we have more than sixty-four thousand.
That's what Joe's pressing for.
That's, that's a total increase, that's not, that's a total increase, not...
That's the increase, not the total amount, okay.
Right.
Because it's flat funded for...
Right, the appropriations are flat.
Appropriations are flat, so this is, that sixty-four thousand is your...
So the voters could, the voters could actually cut their, their budget. Now, did we talk about all your, your suggestions here?
No, but if the board would like.
Basically, it just went up two point nine seven.
I know, that's the percentage, but the actual budget, what, what you need to spend and what the police need to spend, the town needs to spend, does not include the allocation, does it?
Right.
This is?
Because the allocation is separate requests.
And we have no control over that, but we have to figure it as, we have to figure it in...
The worst case scenario.
Worst case scenario.
Yeah, it can't.
So I, I did have other proposed cuts if the board was interested. If not, I would understand, because you are at full of three percent.
I was...
Let's talk about it.
We can talk, I know we discussed when I'm...
I already know where you're going with that.
Right. Let's talk about it.
Okay, so...
We've already done most of the stuff that you had for.
Uh, you, there was the sheet that was on the table.
Yeah, this one.
Yep, because we, we took the... Didn't we take the vehicle and move it to thirty?
Yep.
Public Works vehicles, we did.
We did.
We do a line item of police vehicles, we did that.
We did number two.
And we did number three, transfer station.
Nope.
It's the other sheet.
Other sheet I'm talking about, the other cut sheet.
Proposed cuts?
Yeah. Okay, so for that, we did buy a whole bunch of equipment, and with the understanding that with that equipment, we'd be, we'd be showing less labor cost and less overtime. My proposal is to cut summer overtime by three thousand and winter overtime by four thousand.
Is that a realistic cut, or are we just going to be overspent on those ones?
Managing the budget.
I mean, that, that all depends on, especially the winter. I mean, if you have a hard winter, you're going to be way over.
How about this?
If you have an easy winter, you're going to be way over.
How about this?
Winter and still be over because of the timing of the storms.
Do the summer and not the winter.
How about this, we split both of those in half?
Or just do summer?
Or summer? Somebody who's on summer, you can manage.
Summer, I thought, was transfer station for vacations. I thought that's why that was that.
That's most of it. Because I have to pay a guy to go down there when I was on vacation.
Right, that's what I thought it was.
Is your pay less now, you have new employees at lower rates? You don't have jack or anybody higher?
No, less budgeted in salary already at the, at the level.
I was thinking of the overtime section, is what I'm talking about. Your overtime is less on jack, it would be on one of the new...
What are the pieces of equipment that make summer overtime more efficient? Which ones?
Which one makes it better?
Yeah, which?
Probably the excavator's making it better.
Is it that, or are we just spending more time doing things?
We're trying, we're trying to get things more, I mean, you know, you can't save on the twenty-eighty.
What I'm saying is, I think we're still using all the labor hours, so...
We are.
I'm having a hard time seeing where you're going to cut it.
Cut it now.
I don't want to cut it at all.
We're not cutting the forty hours, we're cutting...
The overtime.
We're saying we're working so well now, we won't need overtime.
I, I, that's not, I mean, what if you have a flood? It's more...
I've sat in meetings where I've heard, I'm not going to be able to cut overtime because I got this new truck. I'm going to cut overtime because I got a new excavator. I'm going to cut the salt budget because I got a new brine system.
Yeah.
This is the time where we'll see the cost. This is the wheels hit the road right here.
And, and if we don't take the money...
That's where it's going to show.
That we've saved.
Another year.
But if you have a hard winter, where are you going to do it?
I'd go back to splitting those numbers in half.
I think we should, if we don't take it out, we'll, we'll spend it someplace. And I think you should take every opportunity, you should take every opportunity to give this cut just as low as you can.
I guess I, my understanding when we bought things like the excavator, were that we would see more things get done. I didn't see a cost savings coming ever in that purchase, did you?
Labor savings?
Well, outside purchases, yes.
Yeah, outside purchases.
But they're going to spend it for...
But I, I guess I didn't see a cost savings in labor, I, I'm just being honest with what I saw. But I, I guess I didn't see a cost savings in labor. I, I'm just being honest with what I saw.
You can't. Yeah, you can't because.
Sam will tell you that I, he doesn't like me anyway, but.
No, no.
Cause I like it.
I'm not a big fan of, depending on some of the equipment, but I, I'm saying I, I didn't see it saving overtime.
I think that I, I expect to see savings during sidewalks this winter. Because we have, because we have the new cap, because we, the, the ability to de-plow or whatever here. And if you're not, if we're not gonna be able to do sidewalks quicker in less hours, what do we do it for?
But I think he's doing it more often. I, I think. I think he's doing a better job.
But, but, and, and we, I come back again, if we're doing it more often, if we need to do it good, but if we don't.
I think you weren't doing a good enough job before and you are now.
Okay, I.
And that de-pow goes.
I gotta stay behind you on that one. I, and it's just like. This is my biggest pet peeve.
The new truck with, like, the one I got now with a wing on it. I went around the outside of town and made one trip, one trip. Put my saw down, plowed it, never had to push it back. So I'm making one trip.
It should save.
So that's, so that's why.
It's saving me time.
So, and we should be saving time, hours?
But is it same?
But you're gonna spend the hours on something else because the hours are a sunk cost. You can't tell the people to go home, I'm not gonna pay you.
Right.
So then actually you can.
No, but overtime, we.
Overtime.
We're just talking OT.
All, all we're talking about here is savings, overtime for winter and summer. And, and I thought it was, we were spending overtime because we didn't have the right equipment or we didn't, and we weren't, we could be more efficient.
But the storms, the storms that come on the weekend, got your money.
Okay.
We've gotta make ourselves, try to capture that or we're gonna lose, or we're not gonna have any savings.
Go ahead. The winter storm that comes on Friday night and doesn't get done until Monday morning is the one that got you.
Well, that's what if budgeting. We're not gonna do that.
But, but that's not what was sold though, John. What was sold was, we get this truck, I save overtime. That's what the sale was. And that's what I'm going back to. I get brine, I cut salt, okay? That's what we're going to.
Why, why not go back to, why, I'm just saying, split the difference on both of them and see what we get. See what we get. That covers us, that hedges our bet a little bit. It does cut. You know, there's a, there's a thirty five hundred dollar cut.
We're taking fifteen out of summer?
Fifteen out of summer, two thousand out of winter.
So that's fifty one eighty nine. Jenny, did I do that math right?
I don't know.
She's drifting off.
Yeah.
She's thinking about climbing Fraser Hill.
Well.
No.
Get Bill out to tie you up in his motorcycle.
Yeah, other, other reductions, I thought, also back to salt. With the new equipment, we're supposed to be saving money on salt. And I'm not saying cut that, but I'm saying flat fund it.
What is, what's that mean?
Just at least bring it down to fifty two five.
Where are we now?
Sixty.
So what's that?
I thought we did that.
Is that three loads of salt? For twenty five hundred piece? What's that mean in a real life situation? What's a load of salt do? Like several storms, how many times can you?
Well, with my brine down, I'm only using one load of salt.
Where does your brine come out of the land?
I took it out of the salt.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
So are they a wash? What's brine cost?
It's, yeah, we did it out, it's about three loads of, of salt for my brine, which will last me all year long.
So that might be a real thing?
Well, it should be.
Okay.
So what we should do then?
So that's an okay cut?
I think it works.
It's not a cut, it's just a flat. It's a flat. It's a cut.
It's a reasonable budgeting.
Right.
Strategy. Okay.
Let's do that.
Okay. Sam?
Sam.
Sand, I was recommending to take three thou, was it three thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Just because the, the average came out to be just over ten, or just under ten for that.
The only reason I was worried about that was Sam thought that he needed to replace. In our last conversation, he didn't like the sand we had in our stockpile.
Right.
So I.
Silk we had in our stockpile.
We were gonna wait and see how it went through the winter, but I don't know if you wanna cut yourself short yet.
That's a good point.
What can you use that for on the fill?
Believe it or not.
Do I hold off on that one?
I think we should.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Transfer salary.
Transfer station, did we already do?
That's just reflecting what's actually there, right?
Is that the four thousand?
Yeah, but I think we did.
We did.
You did that already. Okay.
That's my thought.
Yep.
Everything else is.
HRA, we, we did, we did.
So you must've dropped lawyer two point nine now.
Where did we end up with the HRA? I've forgotten already.
We did, we spent ten thousand?
Yeah, we went to forty five, right. Okay, yep, 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 yep.
When we come back, we'll have a clean budget to look at anyway.
What does that look like now?
Two point, that brings you to two point four six for the budget, two and a quarter with appropriations.
Love it, love it. The only other.
We should have some more appropriations. This is really starting to look like. This is, this is looking great.
It's, it still may not help.
Are we still gaining, Bob? Are we still gaining?
So we're down, we're down at two four.
Well, it's better.
All right.
When we went through the first time, we talked about the paving number and we can that up a little more. Depending on how we got to the end.
Depending on how we looked here. What is the potential paving schedule that you're talking, where is the money or?
Right, how does it?
How does that come out? I, I just.
That's my question.
I, I know the plan you're putting together. We wanna make sure you're funded to meet your plan.
So, so we tried, we broke up pave, we, we got estimated costs and broke out paving, assuming there would be a hundred and eighty thousand dollars every year. A little bit of extra, ten thousand like in a short street inside the village, just, just blacktop, not ground down or anything, just put that inch and a half on. Twenty, twenty thousand dollars more.
Might it also cover like the drainage associate, like if you had to? You know, if you got a culvert, you gotta dig up before you do the road. I, I don't know. Have you got all those budgeted?
Not culverts, that's just, that's just making it black.
Like before we lay down on this black, don't we have a bunch of work to do under the road?
Yeah, but I think, I think the state, like the grants will come with.
Are gonna cover that, okay.
Yes.
All right, I'm good.
There might be, there might be a few that we have to pay, but I mean.
Is it, is it, is there potential, is there potential to?
A culvert, let's see.
I was gonna do two hundred.
That's where your excavator.
Gonna save you money.
Right. It's outside.
Yeah.
Outside, so I, you just get great money outside, go ahead.
So is there potential at some point if we need a little more to do, a little more that we got fund balance money that we could play with? Or is that fund balance set in stone?
You don't wanna touch the public works fund balance this year, you said?
I mean, it's the board, it's, obviously, it's the board's money, but.
No, it isn't.
It's the.
That's a perfect way to get hung.
Yeah.
For the short news.
So when I was looking at the capital, capital budget. The board funded this year and it, and it looks good. Next year, with the same budget allocations, you'll look good. But there's gonna be a shortfall of a few thousand dollars. I'm proposing to use public works surplus. General fund balance next year to supplement the.
The need.
The need then. And then the year after that as well. This year though, for the general, the general fund fund balance, there is, we are lacking in funding going towards the fire department. And, and I'm recommending moving whatever that number was out of the fund balance into the, the fire department vehicle reserve.
Okay.
I thought I heard that we were at sixty days and the target should be ninety.
If we can move.
From the auditor.
The auditor told us that.
We're not gonna be ever at six, at ninety. We're never gonna be at ninety.
You're moving twenty thousand five hundred to general fund to the fire.
I mean, I'm, that's ridiculous money. That's, I, he always wanted that.
Yes, he did.
He always wanted that.
Turn the light back on.
He, uh, Smith wanted more.
Oh, he wanted ninety days though, didn't he?
Well, he wanted, he wanted a heck of a lot more than that.
He wanted six months or something like that.
We also have, we have the emergency fund too. I, I, I have three hundred.
I don't think this town is in too bad a shape myself.
I don't know. I, I never thought that.
We still, the, the, you're gonna constantly have this conversation.
Yeah.
If there's not a policy that says this is where the town wants to be. You know, with the, with the understanding that the auditor wants something different.
It, it is something, it's a, it's a conversation and a policy.
It's all, it makes it, makes it, what it makes it up to is how deep is your pocket? How, how deep you want your pocket?
Yeah, but you're gonna fill one hundred one percent.
So we have, we have the, what the heck time is it? I lost track.
It's nine, nine forty, nine forty.
So you only had twenty eight thousand dollars of new fund balance. You were one fifteen, now you're one forty four.
Right.
So obviously, you're getting, every year, you're getting a little closer. Not that you'll ever, well, not, not that it's realistic that you'll get to zero fund balance. It's always gonna be one side or the other, zero. But you're getting closer every year. I mean, it used to be seventy, a hundred, okay?
Yeah.
We're getting a lot closer.
We.
You're not gonna have those.
When I first was on, and it was, of course, we were doing, dealing with half the amount of budget. But it was assumed twenty five thousand. That would be the fund balance. That was it.
Who assumed it would be twenty five?
That's what it, and that's where it ended up a lot of, a lot of years too, when I first got on the board.
Oh, oh, okay. Then over a year, that's you say.
Maybe, it was half, it was half the budget. It was a million dollar budget as opposed to two million now, so. Thanks. What you got here?
One for each of you, I think.
Mm-hmm, that's, that's the fund balance.
John?
Uh, thank you.
How'd you do that?
Carry him around with me.
Stuff here.
Stuff, good job.
Okay.
So for the warning, the, the board has Article seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty three.
Have you crossed eighteen off?
I'm, I'm proposing to not use any public works funds this year and using it next year to, towards the capital, capital budget.
Can we talk about Article twenty as it is here?
If it makes it walk, cause then next year you'd be like, what are we gonna do? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, John.
Can we talk about Article twenty while we're here?
No, let's start, let's start, let's start at seventeen. Well. And then we'll get down there. I promise.
Going to appropriate X for.
Do we have?
Not yet.
Do we have any suggestions?
For, for this one, I'm suggesting moving twenty thousand five hundred dollars from the general fund into the fire department equipment fund. And, and that will, that will fund the, the capital budget.
Okay.
That, that's, and that still leaves some money sitting there in that. What's everybody think of that?
I'm okay with that.
To the capital fund?
Fire department equipment fund.
Equipment fund.
Okay.
Okay.
I just don't like to see the. Those, the fund balances go to the line items. Reserve counts are okay, cause they don't affect your budget so much in the next year.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you.
No, we were told.
That would be the education you brought.
If you put twenty thousand in your budget, gives next year, you have twenty thousand.
Yeah, it, it took me a long time to figure that out, believe me, and.
We did figure it out though, Bob.
I'd like to take some of the things I said back.
We all do that, especially on these budget things.
Older and.
Wiser.
No, more supplicant.
I just don't really see what it makes for a difference, whether it's this year or next year.
So we're.
Cause it's hard to keep.
Track.
Yeah.
And.
And boards change as they go, so.
Article nineteen.
So we're not gonna do eighteen. Is that, is everybody comfortable with that? Article nineteen.
Okay, so this is the one percent tax, and I know there's one percent local option. And I know there's, there's a, folks are on the edge, are hedging about this.
Is infrastructure debt too vague? Do you have to specifically say water enterprise or?
Talking to Bill Canfield, he, he was recommending, cause he has to take and, and that, that you use it and use the wording infrastructure.
Debt or whatever.
Not, not go to the specific one.
Can't do a specific item? I was told that, so.
You can, but there's drawback.
Yeah, right. He said the ones that are, I mean, heck, Rutland Town has a one percent option. There's a lot of, it sounds that are using the one percent.
It's okay that it's in an enterprise fund?
I think it's a terrible idea.
Mentioned.
It's infrastructure.
I, help me understand, Bob, the, the comment about, I, I guess, cause I don't know how we can do this without a one percent option. What, what is it?
I just think you're, I think you're, you've got a little bit of a revitaliz, revitalization going on in the downtown and the retail businesses down there. You're automatically pricing them another percent higher than they were, you know, a day ago. And I just think, I just don't like, well, I don't like sales tax anyway, I. In this, I just don't think it's a, it's a good thing for the town. Manchester, places like that, Manchester gets a lot of ski traffic.
Manchester's a good one.
Out of town traffic, whereas Fairhaven, we're, we're taxing mostly locals. And, and it's not the same. I think the one percent works for those guys. It may work for, for Rutland Town, but I don't see how.
And put your, that being the case, cause we got into the discussion of one percent option tax to help keep the cost of the water and sewer bills to something managed. Uh, and without that.
What are we talking about? What are we talking about here over here?
Your thing.
Oh, yeah, I just, I've got two things going on, I didn't know.
So, so if we don't go, and the reason I'm a proponent for the one percent option tax is, we've got to do everything in our power to get that water and sewer, which is already, in my opinion, way too high. When it goes to next time to pay, to pay for this bond, I don't even wanna think about the, the cost and what, what our water and sewer bills.
I would prefer personally.
Yeah.
Something like we talked about, where we take, we take eight percent, a percent and a half, or two percent of the general fund. And dedicate it towards, towards the. Towards the particular infrastructure we're trying to pay out this time, which would be the sewer plant.
How much money would that be, you know?
And if we.
Twenty thirty, it'd be.
If we.
Here, here's one downside.
Cause you wanna take, and you wanna.
I want it to end, I want it sunset.
But, I, and I, I understand what you're saying, but. You're, the, the, the reason for the charging everybody, you know, uh, the, you know, for the water sewers, that, that it's the, and the infrastructure that benefits. Everybody, even though they're not using it, but it, it attracts business.
I, I think.
But if you attract business, okay, if, let's just say we were to attract a medium-sized company and they were to take the old racetrack and build it up, whatever. They're gonna want tax relief. So, you've just given away the benefit that you said, you've been told, telling the taxpayers that everyone should pay, but they're not gonna pay. They, they being the, the, the co- the new company, because any, any decent-sized company is gonna ask for property tax stabilization.
And we have a policy, we have a.
A ten-year policy.
Stabilization policy, and I understand that.
That we don't know how to apply.
Do we have it successfully using, saying, okay, I'll go just get further?
I gotta throw that in, because we don't.
We don't.
I, I don't know, I just think, I, I just, the one percent is a, first of all, it's gonna be very difficult to get rid of. People will be very comfortable with that revenue.
Yeah, once you start it.
I mean, I, not that, not that you're changing, if you impose a, uh, whatever percent, two percent, one, one and a half percent, some, some thing, you're, you're still have, you still have a long time to pay that, that bill off, but, I don't know, I just don't like the.
But when it disappears, when that sun sets.
It just, it sunsets when that's done.
You're using on paving, or, by the time that sun sets, you'll be using it on, uh, aerial flyways because you'll have hovercraft.
I, I believe that the one percent option tax is something that we, we need to let the taxpayers and the voters decide on and not us sit back with our own bias of what we should or, or shouldn't do personally. And the one percent, the, I, I look at infrastructure, and our infrastructure is crumbling, no different in any place, all around. And a one percent option tax, not just a deal, because I, I don't think it should be just for this bond. More, more I look in the one percent option tax, we have more things that we have to fix around here. It, that, it's, we're gonna, it's gonna take some pretty good, uh, structure to make sure that you're not stealing from it and you're, and you're paying the, the water.
Sewer bond.
The way, the way.
I look at it for paying the sewer bond.
The sewer bond, but once you, once you set up and you get the one percent, I don't think it'll ever go away, personally. And I, but I'm, I'm sitting here saying, I'm okay with it, because you're always going to have things. We're not gonna take ten years to try to figure out how to fix a bridge. You're gonna get something done. When you look at, uh, no, I don't know what, we, we've got some figures together of what the monies look like coming out of that, and I think there's a lot of different options, but the first step, and if, and even if we didn't go with the option tax, because I'm, again, don't, the only thing I'm not just totally heels dug in, I'm just trying to get close, if we went and said, okay, let's take one or two percent of the, from the general fund, we, we still would have to go ask taxpayers.
Oh, we would, yeah.
Yeah, I, I can, if they would do a one or two percent. I don't know about you, but I'm not voting for no one or two percent if I'm not, uh, on water and sewer. The one percent option tax for everybody that comes in, not just the taxpayers, but anyone that comes in here.
But where does it stop?
And by, by the way, they're already paying, in, in other places where they go, they pay that. It's not stopping businesses from people coming and, and using their businesses. So, I, I just, I just think that we have to, if we don't start using some of the tools that, that are out there so that we can fix our infrastructure, we're gonna be sitting here constantly chasing our tails trying to get infrastructure improved. If that's not the answer, then we have to find another answer.
I gave them.
I, and I, I'm not a, I'm not a, uh, I'm, I'm not a fan of anything that raises my taxes any higher than what my taxes are, quite frankly, for my general taxes, for my home, my water and sewer and regular taxes, we're already, we, we, again, Fairhaven, we have a major affordability issue. You gotta be able to afford to live in Fairhaven, and we're, and we're costing ourselves right out of it.
And, and we're, and we're talking to the wall because what the school board wants.
Let's not change, let's not change the subject, so what's the, what's the consensus of the board? We'll, we'll beat this to death if we don't. Leave it as an article on there.
So, so this, uh, this is the board's first go, you don't have to decide tonight. Um, you'll have one more look at this on the fourteenth of next month, and then there will need to be a special meeting on the fifteenth, because that's when all the, all the petitions are due in, on the fifteenth, so.
Could we run some numbers to your, to my question to you, Bob, of what the, what is the percentage that pays, that would, that would match some of these numbers that we'd have to, to, to pay down the water and sewer tax? I, I wonder what the real numbers look like and what, what that means.
Into the, you'd like to see what that payment looks like sitting in the general fund budget?
If it was in the general fund budget?
Okay.
So, I could compare apples and apples?
That makes sense.
Not, not, no, I know, the other question I would ask about the one percent, and then I will shut up, is, is probably not.
That's okay.
Is there separate paperwork that, that the merchants have to do?
No, it's, so right now, depending on what the, you know.
If they're collecting seven, they'll just collect eight.
Yeah, so, yeah, after collecting nine, I think it is on alcohol, they'll just push a button and now they're collecting ten.
Right.
And they send it in the same way they would.
It was not just on alcohol.
So, it gets sent to the state and the state.
State refuses it back.
It, it's almost no work on the part of the, on the part of the merchant.
Except for handling charges.
The reason I like this, even though nobody asked, is because the town, the town in Fairhaven is gonna pay for their sewer plant. If you go with this sales tax, anybody passing through Fairhaven buying a Coca-Cola is now helping pay Fairhaven for their water pump, their sewer plant.
I just don't think there's enough of those type of people. It's, it's different than Manchester.
It could be a small.
You are the first gas stop.
I, I see a ton of New York plates all over the place here, and it, I, I think we, it's bigger.
Yeah, we don't wanna compete with New York's gas tax.
I think Bob does make a fair point, though, that we, we do wanna do everything we can to support those businesses, and if they, if they feel that this is a threat, the people, there's more people in town voting that are not business owners. Right?
Really?
That don't see it that way. Right?
What I, what I feel, what I'm hearing, if this goes on the ballot the way it is now, it's gonna get turned down.
Well.
Taxpayers may be a moot point, the taxpayers may say no.
Then we have other options.
Potentially, yeah.
Alright, well, let's, let's move on, we've.
And luckily, you have a little bit of time before you're making the first payment.
Right, right, the, uh.
Article four.
The horse, the, uh, horse is beaten, okay. Uh, shall the, Article twenty shall the, the voters of Fairhaven appropriate fifty thousand to grind and repave Carnarvon Street?
So, that there is gonna increase that two point seven?
That, that appropriation is not in your appropriations.
Was that people putting petition together, or where is that?
No, that's, so we had talked about this throughout the year, and that's, this would be an article by the board selecting.
So.
I got a question for Sam on this. Up on, our high street comes down to Carnarvon.
Yeah.
There's two-inch galvanized water main up there that ought to be replaced before this gets all done. If you're aware of that. You say we can reline the sewer pipe, so hopefully.
I'm hoping I can.
I'm gonna find out before I did much.
That's what I'm, so, I'm, again, I'm looking into.
We got any, uh, I know we got the camera and everything, we ever get the inflatable balls so we can just go from manhole to manhole and shut it off and fix it?
No.
We should do that. What, what?
What does that?
Okay, go ahead.
I, I'm, I'm back to the, the warning item here, because I'm, I thought we were, I'm just was surprised when I read it, because I'm saying, wait a minute, we're putting a haven schedule together. Where did we make the decision that Carnarvon is our worst street and we should go right out and ask for money to, to fix it? At number one, because if I was gonna say the street on Fourth Street is nothing but potholes from one end to the other right there, I'm saying, Carnarvon doesn't really, I didn't think we had a major problem with Carnarvon, so I'm, I'm, I'm just, are we either gonna put a schedule together in which I would expect Carnarvon to be a part of that schedule?
I think Carnarvon is on the schedule for this year. Um, and again, this is just the, the conversations that I, that just in passing with the board and, and a little bit with Sam. Uh, the board doesn't have to do this, or they can choose a different route.
No, I was just wondering how we decided on the priority that Carnarvon would get done, because I, mine street, I mean, there's, there's more streets out there that I would, maybe I don't see the, the need as much as.
I mean, basically, plan the, the fifty thousand dollars is gonna help us do this, this, in, in this part of the town.
You're saying it could just say paving.
Right, it doesn't have to be.
Yeah, and then we can, we can decide where, I, I, I have no, I have no problem if you want fifty thousand set aside to help us. We're doing what we want, but.
I, I think it should just say we're doing both ends, or we're doing some streets.
Additional paving?
A additional paving, no.
Well, I just, when I, when I looked at it, I said, geez, did someone get a petition together for, for Carnarvon Street?
Here's the deal, if you think about it, Carnarvon Street is the most savable street we have on the north side.
Yes.
It's curbed, it's got, it's, it.
It's got a base.
It's, it's got a base because we did it a while ago, and it's time that we do it. So, if we save that street, and then with our regular monies, we're doing all the side streets to it. We got a pretty good hunk of in- infrastructure that's brand new and easily taken care of. I, I think Carnarvon Street's where you start.
It's kind of a hard part.
Work out the, work out the Fourth Street, and, you know, the other streets will be taken care of by the state eventually. The, the, the other main streets.
I think.
This one's gonna be done next year, so this one here, then we build in the middle of that, and like, pine streets getting done, mechanics getting done.
And, and maybe it was just that I was surprised when I looked at it, and then I looked and I said, fifty thousand, is that enough to do what you gotta do?
See, I think that's the one that you can do for fifty thousand, because it's savable. I mean, once you grind that.
I don't, I don't even think it's gonna be that, but, I mean, fifty thousand is a good.
You're not, you're just doing the travel portion, right? You're not doing that slope side up to the sidewalk on this side nearly.
On Carnarvon?
Yeah.
On the sidewalk? No, we won't do the sidewalk.
No, the, from the road to the sidewalk, that's paved too.
The, the, the west side.
Yeah.
The west side is not a concrete or paved or curb, but.
What you're gonna run into those people saying, why didn't you just put that in your, in your paving budget if you think that you need fifty thousand?
Unless you live on Carnarvon Street, I, I would take Carnarvon, I like your proposal of.
Take the worst part around.
I guess I'm just wondering, should the fifty be added to the one eighty and say, two thirty and?
I, I did that, I did that.
And basically, do the voters wanna go from?
Well, then should we level funded our paving?
No, no, I think we're gonna get to that hundred and eighty all the time now.
Okay.
Knowing full well that we've been sitting on a hundred thousand for, forever, so we get to that. And, and if the people want to do more, this is where we do it, and it may not end up being Carnarvon Street. Maybe we do, say, additional paving.
So, I'll just give you my last two cents, and then I'll be going about this.
Maybe.
Because if I, when I, if I'm going in to vote and I look at this to repave Carnarvon, and I live anywhere other than on Carnarvon Street, no! And, and we didn't get our fifty thousand, no, I'm just telling you that I don't believe if you want fifty thousand. If you want fifty, I'm just telling you, if you want fifty thousand, but if you were to tell me, give me fifty thousand dollars for paving.
If it's at Bud Avenue, we will.
And we will pave the worst streets and we're working on the north end.
See, Bob's gonna vote no, it's not on the south side.
I, 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 again.
Dick Frazier said here.
I, I, I believe.
He's be proud of what happened down there, Bob, I'll pay for it.
No, but, I, again, I'm, I'm just trying to say, if we really want this to go, and I do believe we should do it, don't get me wrong, I don't think the way it's worded is gonna get your fifty thousand.
But you do think this is, right?
Additional paving, oh, there isn't anybody who isn't gonna tell you that potholes are terrible, we need to do paving.
So, if it, if it's.
I have a problem with that way, if it, it just so happens that we get to Carnarvon Street, good.
Shall the voters of Fairhaven appropriate fifty thousand dollars to re, to add to the additional, add additionally to the paving budget?
Did you just change it from Carnarvon?
I'm good, I'm good.
Just say, 'cause I'm sure I saw Carnarvon there.
This darn technology at the meeting, crazy.
Yes, I, I, I.
You don't like it at all?
I don't like it, I'm ready to sit and talk.
What?
You could find that bottom line so easy.
I, I don't like to use the, the screen, I like to just sit and talk and then go by hand, yeah.
I couldn't see that backwards, you gotta, I gotta get a dyslexic mirror.
End?
Yeah.
You've got to do it.
Yeah.
Otherwise, where are we gonna have the next special meeting to go over all the changes that we just did?
Well, I think, is, is the board caught, so does the board wanna have, uh, back to the budget, so I understand. Are we approving the budget, or are we waiting until a next meeting to approve the budget? Because that'll make it difficult, and that'll start sending out stuff to the town board.
Do we have to approve the budget this meeting?
No.
No, you, you don't, but we did cancel two meetings with the expectation we would do that thing.
Here's, uh, what I would do. We'll give you till the next meeting to, uh, find the glitches.
Yeah.
And, and the final on the, on the, um, we'll, we'll vote on the budget that day, which is when?
Fourteenth. And then have it done by the fifteenth.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Would you like to have a meeting on the seventh?
Thirty-first.
We could have a meeting on the seventh.
It should be fast, because you guys have seen the.
Right, could do it on the seventh.
Special budget.
As long as the numbers.
I'd like Jay an opportunity, I'd like Jay to have an opportunity to weigh in.
We'll do one on the seventh, yeah.
So, we'll have a meeting next, the seventh, yeah.
Decide about the next warrant, or you're just gonna come in and sign it?
Bobby, come in and sign it?
Yeah, I think we were gonna come in and sign it.
I didn't hear, so.
Yep, yep, that works. Don't be afraid to send a reminder or two to some of the driftier members.
Oh, you can, you can message me now, Bob, it's my, message it to my telephone number.
You've got modern.
Little bit.
Fairly modern man, right next to me.
That terrible daughter of mine is written on the newspaper, on the ground.
Okay, so we out of this now, for now? Moving right along?
I think it looks, I mean, all, all. All the discussions, I think it looks pretty good.
It's looking pretty good over here, it feels comfortable. He keeps turning the light off, I don't know if I like that.
I'm gonna move over here.
I watched him, I do that.
Geez, you know, Bob, I'm getting pretty good, I haven't ran my left knee into this table in a while.
I got sucked into that, I was sitting on my chair all the time.
I'm not a professional, but that's a mentally unsound man.
It's an uncle I was trying to do, and he fell off.
If he's got a rope, it's not, sit there.
Well, those guys do sometimes.
Oh, I gotta, Bob, I gotta ask you, you like this chair better than the green one?
Yeah.
Whoa! You're on candid camera while you were, Bob.
There you are.
Wow, oh, Joe, don't forget that Jay hasn't made it yet.
No, he hasn't.
Okay.
He ate peanuts.
Where, what time? It's ten o'clock.
Five o'clock, is that a necessary meeting?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I'd like.
So, I'm going to skip over the parking lot.
Yeah.
And go to roundtable.
So, that's, uh, let's see, two items. Uh, still, we are going to do some research, I know we're having a budget on the water and sewer bills. I'm still getting feedback from folks that are still.
Yes.
Concerned, and I somehow think we need to go do some research. There's, there's more than the occasional flyers that, that are happening out there with saying that they, they seem to get a good bill, good bill, good bill, something is way out of whack, and then they get into discussions around, well, don't you have, did you have a leaky pipe, or whatever, they, they go hire a plumber. Everybody in the process seems to be slightly agitated a little bit about having to do, uh, the extra work, that's what I'm saying.
How are the dates on those? I, I think some people genuinely get confused, just because some quarters are longer than others? And I wonder if we could tighten that up?
Well, if you just take time to look at the consumption.
Well, that we're not able to, the, the re, the problem in there, we're going through a changeover issue where you're not getting here the gallons, here the gallons, do the math. You can't do that on your bill right now, and that's, so that causes a little bit of concern, and so the transparency's not there, so I, we, we're gonna get there because I, we're, we're getting the new meters in, we're getting closer, and that's what I keep telling folks, but I.
If you combine that with a long quarter, a long interval.
Yeah.
It compounds the problem.
Yeah.
The, the people that talk to me, they're not talking a few dollars off, they're talking major off. And, and just going back to the same period last year, to see if the consumption, well, it's about the same, so what's, what's your problem? If they say, well, wait a minute, I, I pressure washed my house, my garage, and did a bunch of things last year, I didn't do it this year, it shouldn't be the same. It's, so there's, there's, there's some, I just, I'm not comfortable we have figures. It's, so there's, there's, there's some, I just, I'm not comfortable we have figured it out and would, would, would like it looked, and when you say like it looked at, the proposal would be, you, you take a group and you just check, there, there should be a way with, with our new computers, IT coming along, there should be a way that if something's, that, that is flat, that, hey, this is out of the ordinary, and we don't wait till after everyone's upset at this end, or we might have something. Other item, I'm glad we still have the chief here, the, it was more of the tomorrow, and it doesn't involve us, but there's the, the school Christmas party thing going on, and saying, boy, if we put 100 people in the street going from one place to another here...
Not going to be that.
I, I hope we have folks...
We're going to monitor it.
Thank you, that would be, safety was the only thing.
So I have talked to a couple of people that are part of that, makes it at no point where we like try to enter the school, you're going to see Christmas cows on the lawn and then walk up to the high school. So I've ensured that it's peaceful.
It's a non-issue.
Yeah. I think so too.
It's a stupid non-issue, but...
That's all I have.
Okay.
Sam, we got our new truck yet?
No, it should be between Christmas and New Year's.
Happy New Year.
I've already answered that question.
What we have alone?
Well, I got it written down, I just thought I'd do it again.
What else you got?
That's it.
That's it?
Good.
One thing, would you research on some of the, just looking at the debt management stuff and the different loans we have out? Some of them can be refinanced. And that would be nice to see that we're where we could be. I mean, the one that jumped out at me is the one with the four and a quarter percent. If it, it would be nice if we could do that. We talked about big or low, we talked about water bills, which is going to bring up, people are a little worried.
There was one lady that called me, and she said there was nothing on there that said how much water she used. It was zero. And her bill was $150.
That's, that's more than the base rates. Okay.
I don't know how to answer that one, but...
I refer to Joe.
One, one lady talked to me, and she was very pleased with her water bill that had gone down.
Mine went down.
I don't know why mine went down.
Well, I think you better get on the select board if you want a lower water bill.
I did, I had a blip in the first one.
Out of the river, and you probably wash your health with it.
And then I had a leak, so it was double, and now I'm hoping it's calmed down, but we'll see. I had a toilet, that stupid flapper valve.
Yes.
And, that was a hundred bucks.
Use, use the yellow...
It was a hundred bucks.
Use the yellow flapper valve.
I have one, it still leaks.
Don't tell me that.
Myself, I put it in.
I did too.
If it scratched on the bottom part, that's what happens.
Yesterday I couldn't spell plumber, today I are one.
It's because I stayed at a Holiday Inn Express.
Yeah, you got some number?
Yeah, $1,156,354.45 in the checkbook. Motion to pay the payroll warrant of $31,711.68.
How much?
Okay, got it. Second? All those in favor?
All right. A motion to pay the general fund warrant, $174,556.80. And there were a couple of things in there.
Second?
Second?
Jenny left me a nice note in his, oh, Joe left me a nice note.
Jenny did a nice one for me.
No, I have the green pen.
Yeah, exactly. Blue Cross insurance, flood insurance, mechanic street payment of $70,000 and $11,000. So there was $81,000 of that was mechanic street.
We are holding mechanic street checks for right now. They have some things they need to...
They ought to get that cleared up by your end, don't they?
No, I wish.
Okay. We understand what we're voting on, all those in favor?
All right.
Those opposed? Thank you. Executive session?
No, mostly going to executive session to discuss, but when is that, Joe?
Personnel?
Yeah, personnel, so I will...
Close enough. Is there a second?
Second?
And all those in favor?
All right.
Thank you.